No change. Mark Jane, hello Jane, can you come?
Hi.
We've got a couple more minutes.
Wow. So why am I saying this? I must have second guessed it. I did this.
Yeah. That's probably it. Do we have one that's framed?
Yeah, I signed it.
You mean for administrative report? I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read the...
Sandy.
How are you? There she is.
Sandy.
Coach.
Come on, Jen.
Jen's out. We can bring him up here. So we're gonna wait, we'll wait a couple of minutes here.
It's a minute or something, I don't know. I didn't, I was a little scared. Framing that to our condition.
Yeah, we have quite a lot here. I'm sorry.
I feel like we're in church or something here. It's good to see so many people here. Officers, you guys are always supportive. God bless, thank you. And those that have come out tonight on this cold and stormy night, thank you for, for getting out and seeing. We have a few introductions and a few presentations tonight that we're very proud of, so bear with us and we'll make it through it pretty quick. I'm just waiting for Sandy to come back with a couple of documents and then we'll get started. I can introduce our new Public Works Director who's, who came on board a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Eddie. Our streets are so clean because of this gentleman. Who's birthday, somebody's birthday is today. We need, we need to sing happy birthday to somebody.
Take up attention he wants.
Happy birthday.
We're good. Do we have one? We don't have one for the scholars?
Okay, again, good evening. Thank you for coming to our board meeting tonight. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick.
Here.
Trustee Rocco.
Here.
Trustee Sheehan.
Here.
Trustee Caseras absent. Trustee Lautner.
Here.
Trustee Zora.
Here.
President Cipio.
Here.
Coram, Miss President, sir.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, before we get to the swearing in, I have two presentations I'd like to make that we're very, very proud of to, to highlight members in our community that go above and beyond. And tonight, we're gonna recognize two groups. One is the Nazareth High School Football Team who are state champs. And also, we have two LaGrange Park residents from Nazareth who are scholars and one of them is a football player too. So they're not only good athletically, they're good skill athletes too. Okay, we have Coach White with us today, tonight, so would you please step up, Coach? Whereas Nazareth Academy is a four-year college preparatory high school located in the village of LaGrange Park. Whereas the Nazareth Roadrunners Football Team claims an impressive legacy of four trips to the state finals in five years. Whereas the Nazareth Roadrunners nobly claim their third title in five seasons with an impressive 31-10 win over St. Charles North High School in the IHSA 7A Title Game. Whereas the Nazareth Roadrunners have won state titles in 5A, 6A, and 7A divisions. Whereas the Nazareth Roadrunners can proudly boast a record of 13-1 for the 2018 season. Whereas special commendation is due to all the team members to Coach Tim Rackey and his staff. Whereas we are pleased to publicly commend the Roadrunners for their fine efforts, their sportsmanship, and inspired team play. Whereas all the members of the Nazareth Football Team, players, coaches, and parents should be proud of their hard work and impressive accomplishments this record-breaking season. Therefore, be it proclaimed, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Village of LaGrange Park, we issue this proclamation recognizing the achievements of the 2018 Nazareth Football Team and offer our best wishes for the Roadrunners' continued success. Coach White? I wanna thank you on behalf of the football program as well as the school administration for the success that we've had over the years, in particular, this past year. We have some players, stand up. And one of our assistant coaches, Rudy Luna, here as well. We talk to the, to the players and, and it's not just about the accomplishments on the field. It's also about how they conduct themselves off the field and we try and teach them lifelong lessons that will help them become not only successful as we have in football, but successful as they can move on from Nazareth in college and into what their careers may be as they become members of the working class. But we're very proud of them and, and the success that we have is a culmination of a lot of people, a lot of hard work. And so, on behalf of those individuals, I wanna thank you for this honor and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Can I just ask the team to, team members that are here to introduce themselves, please? Sure, come up to the mic. No, 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 come on up, come on up. This is still my mic though, okay? Thank you, whatever. It was hard work and they fit in shape.
I'm Eric Kramer and I just wanna say thank you for having us tonight.
Colver Selly, thank you guys for having us. We're glad we could portray a good image on our town.
Thanks.
My name's Nathan Lugo. I just wanna thank everybody here and just thank the, the town for giving us all their unrelenting support through everything. Thank you.
I'm Joe Raci and I just wanna say thank you for giving us this opportunity to make LaGrange Park look good and look strong.
Thanks.
And I'm Jack Ferguson and I'm really glad that we could bring something good to this community. I'm happy to be a part of this community.
Thanks.
Well, right back at all you guys. You did make our community look good and we're very proud to have you represent LaGrange Park. And when you guys were on TV and when the excitement was rolling throughout the season about your impressive season and all that you guys have accomplished, it was LaGrange Park that was, was mentioned in the breath, same breath as Nazareth Roadrunners. And we couldn't be more proud of what you guys have shown and exhibited to our community. So thank you. Okay, next, we have commending Nazareth Academy's Illinois State Scholars. We have two from LaGrange Park. Whereas Nazareth Academy is a four-year college preparatory high school located in the village of LaGrange Park. Whereas Nazareth Academy embodies the four pillars of scholarship: service, spirit, and unity. Whereas Nazareth Academy introduces 45 students who exemplify the pillar of scholarship as recipients of the prestigious honor of being named as 2019 Illinois State Scholar. Whereas the Village of LaGrange Park proudly recognizes two of our young residents, Joseph Raci and Catherine O'Hay, among those named as 2019 Illinois State Scholars. Whereas these talented young students represent approximately the top 10% of high school seniors from 757 high schools across the state. Whereas we are pleased to publicly congratulate these valued young residents for their outstanding academic achievement and to acknowledge the degree to which they are regarded in this community. We look forward to the realization of their future goals, dreams, and aspirations. Therefore, be it proclaimed, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Village of LaGrange Park, do hereby issue this proclamation recognizing the academic achievements of the 2019 Illinois State Scholarship recipients and offer our best wishes for their continued success. Can I please ask those two individuals to come up? Well, you guys are state champs in our eyes. We're very proud of all that you've accomplished and again, for representing the Village of LaGrange Park. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and our staff, we would wish you the best in the future endeavors as we stated and congratulations and boy, you guys are smart. Joe, would you like to say something?
Thank you for the recognizing Catherine and I up here. It really means a lot and I'm happy to be part of the Grange Park community and I always have pride for it, so it's, feels good to bring pride to the community.
Thank you for recognizing us and I'm very lucky to live in LaGrange Park.
That's awesome.
Do we have any better representation than the football team and these scholars? Thank you for all you do, you guys. So in continuing in the vein of what we as the board are most proud of in this community, we now have swearing in ceremony of probationary police officer Erin Hansen. Officer Hansen is a proud mother to two children, Grace and Tom. They presently reside in Tinley Park. Erin is a graduate of St. Xavier University with a bachelor's degree in nursing. In her past, she was employed as an ER nurse at Loyola Medical Center. Erin is graduate of the Cook County Sheriff's Police Training Academy. She finished her field training in late November of 2018 and as recently as a week ago became state certified as a juvenile officer. Erin is presently assigned to the day shift, but as May 2019, will be luckily placed on the midnight shift. Through her hard work and professionalism, which she has already demonstrated, we all expect she will excel in her ultimate goal in life, which was that of becoming a police officer. The Board of Trustees in the Village of LaGrange Park would like to welcome Erin to our police department. Chief?
Hi, Erin Hansen. I hereby solemnly swear that I will uphold in defense, that I will uphold in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the United States.
First, Erin, you wanna introduce who's with you tonight?
Sure, I have my mom, my dad, Bob, my son, Sandy, boyfriend Chad, his son Eric, and his parents.
I know we will have the opportunity to have somebody prepare to pin this on you a bit, but the one thing, if I pick it up. The one thing I'll say is that there's something special about tonight. Not only you joining us, which is that much more important, but if you look out here and it looks all the way to the back and it looks all the way to the front, I'll tell you this, you've got a lot of cohorts here that are from even other towns and that means a lot. And for a six-month person to have that much support throughout not only our town, but other towns, thank you. And thank you for every dang thing all of you do, every day, I mean that. Buddy that's here, that's one of the Blues, I couldn't be more proud of you. I don't care what town you work for, I don't care where you're at. I'm very proud to say every moment. Chad, you wanna come on up? We're gonna pin this on. Don't brush your chin. Way to go, Erin.
I just wanna thank the Village of LaGrange Park and Board of Trustees for giving me this opportunity to work for the village, it's an honor. I wanna thank my family and my boyfriend and his family for fearlessly supporting me throughout this entire long, hard process.
Mom, I know that, the last thing I'll say is I know your goal in life was a nurse. She followed that goal, but she was able to follow now her goal and we're lucky to have her do that. So thanks again for that opportunity.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you.
Erin, again, on behalf of the board, welcome. We couldn't be more proud, as with our fire department and our police department. And as you see tonight, the gentlemen and ladies in the back that represent us in blue that provide safety for our community and make it safe for us to go out at night and look over our village, it's not an easy job. They put their life on the line every day and we are most grateful for all that you guys do and thank you so much. And those from, that came to visit tonight, thank you.
Very cool.
Do you want me to, or you want to? Probably so.
Okay, moving forward, the one nice thing is being able to introduce a person that I'll tell you from the short time that I've had a professional contact with this gentleman. He has proven his worth beyond already to us as a director of our dispatch center. If he did a good job of hiding things, he's done a very good job because he's really shown us where he's gonna take us and I can't be more proud to talk about Mike O'Connor, who's our new executive director of LTAC, which is the Lyons Township Area Communication Center. Mike comes to LTAC with more than 20 years in public communications. He has worked as a 911 communicator and supervisor as well as a director in many different agencies, both single, community, and consolidated centers together. Mike also has eight years' experience as an EMT and 23 years as a reserve police officer and deputy sheriff. Mike holds numerous professional certifications, including instruction level of different types of dispatch and emergency medical dispatch. A graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. In 2005, Mike was invited back as an adjunct instructor for them in 2006 and continues to teach today. That tells you right then and there that's a very honored situation for all of us in law enforcement as high-ranking officials to be able to go to that, much less teach at it. So that tells you again who Michael is. In his spare time, Mike enjoys cruising and doing other things as well with bowling, spending time with his family, and best of all, being who he is for us. So without further ado, I will have Mike O'Connor come up and tell you a few things about himself. Michael?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for having me here tonight, it's a pleasure. I'm used to the board meetings vacating as quickly, so I don't take offense to that. So as the chief said, my name's Mike O'Connor. I'm very happy and proud to be the director of your 911 center. And it is your 911 center as much as it's LaGrange's and Western Springs consolidation. You guys were ahead of the game on it. It was mandated by the state. Your three towns, our three towns, got ahead of the curve and I think we're in a very good position right now. So, one of the things in speaking with the managers was to work on an annual report. I've only been here seven weeks, but I think I've got a pretty good handle on what's going on. But it's also kind of an overview of LTAC tonight to let you know what's happening at your dispatch center and where we see ourselves going in the future and what kind of things we're capable of doing. It's kind of the hidden component of public safety. There's the blue line, the red line, we refer to ourselves as the gold. We're the people that hide at night, you don't want, you don't wanna talk to us if you don't have to. So, we've got a short presentation and please feel free at any point to ask any questions. That's what I'm here for. So, the acronym they came up with was LTAC, Lyons Township Area Communication Center. One of the tough things is coming up with a cool-sounding nickname for your center when you're trying to combine multiple town names, but I think they did a pretty good job. The logo's actually pretty slick, I like it. We're starting to brand it more, I've got it hanging, about to be hung up on our door and some other, some other nice stuff. All the dispatchers proudly wear it on their uniforms. So, what is LTAC? LTAC is a consolidated 911 PSAP. PSAP's a fancy name for somewhere that's legally authorized to answer 911 calls, that's all it means. That's public safety answering point. And it's also an emergency communication center. It was created back about three, four years ago through an intergovernmental agreement with LaGrange Park, LaGrange and Western Springs. We're located in the LaGrange Police Department. They remodeled their facility to accommodate us and have room for future growth. And we went operational and live March 20th, 2017. So, we'll be celebrating our second birthday very quickly here. LTAC's organization setup, there's a Board of Directors, which are your three village managers. They are the Board of Directors. They're responsible for giving me my guidance and the rulemaking authority for LTAC. They, there's a chairperson who they rotate biannually so that each town has a fair shake and responsibility of dealing with me and I'm trying not to be too bad to deal with. There's also an operations board. The operations board's comprised of the police and fire chiefs and their job is to give me guidance and recommendations and work with me to develop policy and ensure that everything's running smoothly. One of them also is a chair, they rotate that annually. And the chair is normally my day-to-day boss. I keep being in constant communication with both boards though. They get a weekly update every Friday from me telling them just what's going on in the center, any major issues, any minor issues. And just keeping them apprised so that everyone's well-informed. I'm very big on communication. I don't believe in secrets, I don't believe in hiding bad news. If something's happening, everyone will know about it. And then day-to-day, it's led by the executive director. That's me. I was lucky enough to be selected from a pool of some of my competition that I do know of, some excellent individuals. I consider myself lucky to have this job. I came from Libertyville Police Department with just shy of 20 years. Like the chief said in my bio, I worked at Schaumburg. I've worked at Western Springs back in the early 90s. I grew up in this area, I grew up in Berwin. I spent a lot of time in LaGrange and LaGrange Park and Western Springs though, so it's like coming home for me. So, that's one reason that I did put in for this position and was, I feel myself very lucky to have gotten it. So day-to-day, I'm responsible for running the show. How we're organized is also a 911 JET Sport and that's a emergency telephone system board that each of your communities had. Their job is to approve how we spend your 911 surcharge money that we get from the wireless tax on the phone and also the 911 surcharge on your landlines. That is comprised of the police and fire chiefs, a member of the general public that all serves for your terms and then I'm a non-voting member and I'm also the secretary. So they, kind of an aside to help manage the funding that doesn't come from the villages through their contributions. How do we staff LTAC? Well, we have 15 full-time employees. 14 of them are 911 telecommunications and then there's me. I'm fully qualified. I'm still getting used to answering 911 calls again. It's been a little while since I've done it, but one thing I had made clear to our staff is if something happens, whether it's a wonderful ice storm on a board meeting night or anything else serious, that I'm gonna be right there with them until I'm needed at any OC or somewhere else. So I'm getting used to working the council again and sitting and answering 911 calls. I've thrown for a loop a little bit to see the boss sitting there going, "Yeah, you can park your car there." You know, they're not used to management doing that. But I believe, just like the police and fire chiefs, they're still police officers and firefighters. I'm still a 911 dispatcher at heart and when bad things happen or somebody gets sick, I need to be able to come in and do that job. It's also how I can fairly assess and evaluate them. They work three, eight-hour shifts. We're staffed 24/7, 365. We don't close, just like any other public safety. And our staffing varies based on what the needs are. If there's special events, we up our staffing. And I think I just hit the wrong button. Oh, no, there we go. So here's our organizational chart. Like I said, you've got your Board of Directors, the Joint Operations Board that recommends and helps me do day-to-day planning and then each of the three shifts. We have five on day shift, five on afternoon shift, four on midnight shift because we can go a little bit lower on our staffing. Our newest employee has just celebrated her one-year anniversary with us, but she came with experience from somewhere else. Our most senior employee has, she's on her 26th year. So, we have a very wide band of experience and knowledge and bringing those three combined from the towns really made it a lot easier when you guys consolidate because they brought all that knowledge. So how's LTAC funded? How do we operate? There's two, three primary sources, one's kind of brand-new. The member agencies, so your communities pay an annual assessment. There's a formula that we have that makes sure that it's parsed out fairly based on the workload and the call load. We also get the 911 surcharge for wireline, wireless, VoIP phones, which VoIP is like Vonage and Comcast through your computer, and prepaid phone cards. And we also get alarm monitoring fees for the alarms that come into our panel, burglar and fire alarms. And we also actively seek grant money and we've been successful in that. I'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. And it's something we'll continue to do to find, look for grant funding anytime we can from the state or fed to help offset some of the costs and reduce the burden on the communities. So, what are we capable of? We've got all this fancy equipment and if you came in the room, you'd see a lot of computer monitors and hear a lot of beeps and clicking, but what, what really do we, are we able to do? We're what's called a Phase 2 Wireless Center, which means we can take 911 phone calls from any type of cellular or mobile device. And they, if they transmit GPS... from any type of cellular or mobile device, and if they transmit GPS coordinates, it'll let us plot their location down within a certain area. We can take landline phone calls. We can take texting phone calls, VoIP, which is, like I said, Comcast or Vonage. We can handle anything from hearing impaired, whether it's TTY or RTT, which is the future of TTY. It works on all your cellphones right now. The relay services, we have the language line that has access to hundreds of different languages and dialects that by dialing an 800 number, we have access to them 24/7 in case we need translation services for us or the officers or firefighters in the field. And we're just implementing Rapid SOS in the next week. It's a free software that all the phone providers, Apple, Samsung, those big ones, are paying for, and what it's doing is it's taking not only the coordinates that it sends out with a cellphone call, but it'll use your Wi-Fi and your Bluetooth transmitters to help us narrow down your location even more. On a typical cellphone, the location that they have to give us can be anywhere within 50 to 100 meters, or I'm sorry, 300 meters. So you're talking 150 to almost 1,000 feet. You can be somewhere in that circle. Using those Wi-Fi and Bluetooth transmitters and some of the other features on the phones, it's helping us narrow it down to as little as five meters. And we've been doing a lot of testing, and I'll show you a picture in a second that plotted it, a test phone call within a couple feet of my office. But the biggest advantage of this is it's giving us what's called the Z coordinate or the height. So if someone were to call from Bethlehem Woods, and we're getting a lot of 911 calls or someone's calling for help and they're not sure where they're at, now we'll be able to tell what floor they're on or how high up and make a guesstimate instead of just somewhere in that facility. We can start narrowing it down, and that's a big jump for public safety, believe it or not. So this is a screenshot of the SOS software, and so this is my phone. This is at LaGrange Police Station. And the little dot here, my office, is about three inches off to the side, so it says it's within 30 meters. It's a lot closer. It's within probably about 30 feet, and that constantly updates when we get one of these calls in. So it's pretty impressive. We get it for free, so we'll definitely be utilizing that in those situations where we need to find someone. What other capabilities do we have? We track all our police and fire vehicles by GPS that's located in their laptops, in the rigs and in the squad cars. That lets us send the closest unit when someone's calling for help, whether it's a member of the public or another first responder, or in the off-chance they're not answering a status check or they hit their emergency key and don't answer us, we can look on the map and see where they are at any point. It's real-time. It's updated every couple seconds as they're moving. We don't use it to Big Brother or anybody or anything. We're not watching them for those purposes. We're watching it to ensure safety and getting the closest vehicles to the emergency as we can. We monitor the weather. Today is a great one to look at the weather map. We have a real-time weather service we use that provides us a radar that's updated every six minutes. Dispatchers are very storm-leary. They like to know when they're coming so they can be prepared. So we have this on their monitors so they can see the storms as they're coming in, watch the tracks, keep the shift commanders and the fire officers aware of warnings and watches so that we're ready for when something hits and we're not caught off guard with that. So a little screenshot of what our map looks like with the tracking of the vehicles. I think it's kind of hard to see. I apologize, but this is a LaGrange Park police car that's available and just on patrol. This is a LaGrange police car. There's a Western Springs car, and then little colored circles are recent calls for service. And that's all updated in real-time and linked to our CAD system. The police officers and the firefighters also have the exact same type of map in their cars, so they can see the exact same information that dispatch can, so they can stay updated. And anything we enter into the call, they see real-time also. This is the map from about an hour and a half ago before it got really nasty, showing where the ice sleep mix was coming in to hit us. So the Public Works guys really like this software, too. Lets them see what to expect. One thing we're in the final stage of implementing is emergency medical dispatch. This is what I consider one of the biggest jumps in public safety dispatch in my career besides the technological side is being able to provide this. All of our dispatchers are certified as EMDs. And what EMD is, is it lets us give you pre-arrival instructions and lets us take control of a medical situation. In the old days or the current days, in some areas, you call 911 for help because someone fell, they're having a heart attack, they're choking. Okay, we'll send the ambulance, and unfortunately, that was all they're able to do. Nowadays, dispatchers are trained, they're certified, their protocols are vetted by Loyola in our case to basically augment the paramedics. So if someone has a heart attack, instead of waiting for the ambulance to get there, we will talk you through CPR. We will help you with your childbirth, your person choking, you know, how to stop the bleeding on the cuts. So the dispatchers go through all this training. There's a quality assurance to make sure they're doing it properly. Loyola vets this program, and it dovetails into the paramedics protocols, so we're not doing something outside what they would expect. The paramedics will be getting the information, so as they're arriving on scene, now they have an even better idea of what they're rolling up to, and it also may let them move a couple steps ahead in their treatment. And a lot of times, we can mitigate serious circumstances. Personally, I've got two baby saves in my career that babies, one was choking, one wasn't breathing. Hopefully, the medics would have been able to save it, but I get to go to sleep at night knowing that I'd saved two babies and a lot of other people. You know, it's a very successful program. It's state-mandated, but even if it wasn't, we would do it because it's the right thing to do and it's a level of care that the community deserves. So we're finishing up that. These screens just show kind of the protocols as the dispatchers enter the information. It's linked to our CAD system, so they're not wasting time on duplicate entry. It updates the paramedics, and it asks them the questions. So in this case, I type chest pains in, and what would happen is it would immediately, because that's a serious situation, jumped onto the next screen to determine if the person's actually breathing or not, if they're having a heart attack, and if they're not breathing, it's going to start them on CPR. So it moves very quickly through the process to get that treatment started for people, and then their partners will update the paramedics as to what's going on. So there's no delay. And I told you all about that, pretty graphs and statistics. By the numbers, what did we do last year at LTAC, our first full year in existence? Well, we handled 33,000, sorry. Look at this screen here. 33,000, just over 33,000 police calls for service. 52,248 fire calls for service between the three towns, so a total of 38,174 calls for service. We've got it broken out. So LaGrange Park, since it's hard to read my graph for you, 2,035 fire calls, 9,531 police calls. And those can be everything from a foot patrol, a business check, a lift assist, a structured fire, a traffic stop. It runs the whole gamut, and so I can't break that down for you. That would be better for the chief to speak, but we're a busy center for three towns. We keep the dispatchers busy. It's not just the radio calls they're handling, though. Also, it's how many phone calls are we handling? Last year, we handled a total of 12,485 911 calls, and I think that averages out to one about every 10 minutes or so. Might be a little more than that. About 30, just over 3,200 of them were from landlines. Landlines are the easiest calls for us because we know your location. You're not moving. It's the 9,000-plus wireless calls where people are moving and they don't know where they are. They become a challenge for us, and that's 3/4 of our call line. But total phone calls, it jumps quite a bit because we have those seven-digit lines that everyone likes to call in for all different purposes. Those alone were just over 30,000. So last year's a total, we handled 50,866 phone calls. So they keep busy in there. They have their downtime and some quiet moments, but they stay pretty steady and busy. Some other things we provide for the member agencies, we log overnight parkers. In the last few months, all three towns implemented the frontline system online to log dispatch. It's been a huge hit with, I think, the communities and with the dispatchers. It takes some of the onus off, but if you have to want to park your car for three nights in a row, you don't have to call in for three nights anymore. You can just take care of it yourself when you have time. We monitor burglar and fire alarms. We monitor all three village, police, and fire departments' facility cameras. We can activate the tornado sirens for all three towns. We take care of public works notifications and any other departments or utilities after hours. We maintain hot files, the warrants, any stolen property. We're the central repository for it. For one of our communities, we conduct I-Live-Alone calls, which are elderly residents that need a little checking on. Once or twice a week, we'll call and talk to them, make sure everything's going okay. And we do our public education events such as National Night Out, and we're looking to expand that into some of the neighborhood groups, the schools, and that kind of stuff. We're at Green Center. I had fun with this slide. We try to recycle everything. We're not a big facility, so we try to be cost-conscious about everything and even recycling. So all our toner cartridges, our batteries, everything we can, we recycle. Even the scrap paper from printouts, we'll cut it up, use it for scrap paper, shred it. I know there's a big green initiative in this area, so I thought I'd let you know that we're trying to do our part also. We've also, the biggest success with this will be for us, we're putting in new software and programs that's eliminated tons of paperwork. There's no more printed schedules and time-off requests and payroll reports and time sheets. We're going all to web-based programs that'll eliminate reams of paper for that, and it'll offset the costs very quickly, and it saves a lot of paper for us to have in the store for a long time. So wrapping it up a little bit, what did we accomplish in 2018 as a facility and a center? We had one vacancy that we replaced, one telecommunicator. We recruited and hired her. She had previous experience, sorry, and that was because of a resignation due to a family relocation. So we haven't had any turnover yet because we're not a great place to work. I think it's a great place to work, and I've been there seven weeks. The staff's fantastic. They've made me feel very welcome. I'm loving it so far. They recruited and hired a new executive director. We built out our unmanned backup center here in LaGrange Park, so we have something that a lot of communities don't have, which is a, I call it Dark Center, and Julia's just going to give me a look for it, but I call it the Dark Center because it's kind of dark. All the lights are turned off on it. But we'll have the capability, besides our backup in River Forest, to use that short-term until we can quickly move our assets over here and have radio and phone capabilities so we can still keep the dispatch center local. Like I said, not a lot of agencies do that. I think it's a great thing that you guys planned it this way, and we just started actually training the dispatchers this week and doing some tours and writing our policies for that, and they're kind of interested and excited, which is a great thing. We published a policy and procedure manual, as well as our personnel manual. We participated in National Night Out with our member departments, and they had, from what I understand, they had a lot of fun getting out and meeting people and the kids and having some giveaways. And one of the biggest things that I will credit the managers for and the previous director and everyone that checked in was we applied for and we were awarded an equipment reimbursement grant from the State of Illinois 911 Authority for $869,712.83. In the whole state of Illinois last year, there was only 7.5 million available. There was 7.5 million available. There were very few applications. So LTAC did a fantastic job with their application. I went through the whole thing to see what we did. We got a great substantial money that's going to help us plan and replace our capital going forward for the next several years without having to put any type of hopefully increased burden on the communities. This will offset that and let us do a lot of great things technologically that we might not ever have been able to do, or at least, like I said, without having to put a bigger burden on the communities and ask for special assessments and stuff. So my compliments to your managers and the administrative staff because, like I said, there were very few people that put in for it, and everyone that did got awarded, and there was money left over, which is a shame. But this is a great asset to us as we go forward to plan our next budget. And wrapping up, what's coming up in this current year? We're currently researching to move our police and fire radios to what's called the Starcon Radio Network. It's a statewide network that works interoperably with state, local, and federal. Our officers and firefighters will be able to be heard in Carbondale up to Fox Lake on the chain as clear as I'm speaking to you right now. It's been tested over and over. We're currently testing it again to reassure me that the coverage is here. I'll give you an example that Chief Rampa and I were laughing about earlier is right now, the radios have some iffy coverage over like by Bill's place or behind some of the businesses. They went and tested it. They've never heard it so clear. They're very excited because now they know they can pick up lunch real quick without having to worry about missing a call. We're hearing it inside facilities that had bad coverage before, so the officers and firefighters, we go to any neighboring community with a click of a couple buttons, talk to agencies, and really improves their safety and communication skills. So we're looking at that, and that grant money will hopefully help pay for a large part of this expense if we decide that that's the right way for us to go. We're getting ready for next generation 911, which is the next big step in technology, where our next generation will let us receive text messages, receive audio, receive video from people who call 911, let us receive it, view it, archive it, and talk back with those people. It'll also let us go to any other facility that is linked to us, and with a login of a computer, just like you do at home, we'll be able to bring up our radio and phone screens seamlessly and basically be able to dispatch from anywhere. That's a huge technological thing. The State of Illinois is running the project. We'll have it implemented probably within the next three years, and we'll meet all the deadlines because our technology right now is in a very good place in the center. And we're going to expand our efforts in public education. Like I said, we did National Night Out last year. I want to do that. I want to invite community groups, the boards, anyone that wants to come tour the center and see what it's like. Kind of overwhelming, and it gets kind of loud, but we'll sit on the side and talk. We want to do National Night Out. We want to do, we're just going to start a Facebook page and a webpage to keep the community informed and educate them on 911 stuff, as well as what's going on in our communities. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm also very appreciative of the time and welcoming me here tonight. It feels like home, and I'm always here at your beck and call if you need anything. I'm happy to go through the chiefs and the manager and answer any questions you might have an hour later. So thank you for having me tonight.
Mike, thank you for coming tonight. Very, very informative, a lot of things that we hadn't heard yet, and it's very exciting to see the advances that we've made already, and we're very grateful that you're here taking helm because we can already see that we're going to be served very, very well. Any board members have any questions? Yes, Trustee Lautner?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mike. Very informative presentation. You touched on this a little bit, and I'm glad that you acknowledged that, I think, that we were one of the leaders, one of the first areas to proceed with the consolidated dispatch even before the state mandate. So I was glad to hear you recognize that. But one of our main goals at the very onset was to maintain staff so that no one was going to lose their jobs when we go through a consolidation, and you did touch on it a little bit, but generally speaking, you know, have we been able to meet that goal? Have we been able to retain the positions for the people that were originally involved? And I know there's lots of reasons people move on, but generally, do you feel that we've accomplished that?
I do. Everyone that, from what I understand, wanted to come over, did come over. They're still doing an excellent job. Everyone's kind of meshed very well. It's trying to find three towns and make them, but they're all working very well. Like I said, the one vacancy we had was because her husband had a relocation out of the area, so she resigned. No one else has given me any other plan of leaving. I'm hoping they don't because I've got enough stuff to worry about without recruiting right now. My goal ultimately is that no one ever leaves LTAC unless it's to become a manager or supervisor who moves up in the world or because they're retiring. I don't want us to be a revolving door. I want it to be a place where everyone wants to come to work, where they enjoy talking to me, where they enjoy their coworkers as much as they can, and we're going to work hard to make sure that's the atmosphere. But to answer your question, no one went without a job. They've all seemed to assimilate it very well, and I think we're making a very good work environment for them.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks for what you do.
Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, in your presentation, you touched upon the I-Live-Alone, where you mentioned it's only incorporated in one community. Can you tell me which community that is, and are you going to incorporate it to the other two communities?
It's Western Springs. It's a program they've had in place for about 35 years where they make a daily or weekly phone call to usually some more elderly resident. If the other communities wanted to expand the service or come to their community, I'm sure we wouldn't have problems providing. We are going to provide equal service to all three towns. It'll be across the board. If you guys decide you want to do it, we'll make it work for LaGrange Park, just like we do with Western Springs.
Thank you, sir.
No other comments? Mike, thank you so much.
Thank you for the time. You all have a good night. Stay dry, stay warm.
Okay, moving on.[1732.86] Okay, moving on. Next, we have a presentation by Janet Groh, Executive Director, Interfaith Community Partners. I've known Janet for many years. She's a hard-working and a class act, so go ahead, Janet.
Thank you, President Disipio, for allowing me to come and share what we offer to older adults in our community. Imagine if you couldn't get to your doctor's appointment this week or you couldn't get to the hairdresser or the grocery store. It would have an impact on your life and that's where Interfaith Community Partners comes in. We're a nonprofit organization based in La Grange and we provide rides to older adults, people 60 and better, to get to places like their medical appointments, grocery store, hairdresser, bank. We even take people to church on Sundays. So that's what our client Donna faced when she moved back to this area from out of state. She had lost her husband and wanted to be closer to her son. And her son and his wife work full-time during the day, so we partner with that family. So we provide the rides to the doctor's appointments during the week. They provide the weekly grocery shopping on the weekends. So Donna says, "I'm so thankful for Interfaith Community Partners. I'm not sure what I would do without them." Interfaith Community Partners was started in 2000 by seven local churches and it was quickly discovered that transportation was a bigger need. So originally funded by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and Community Memorial Foundation, we've grown to 14 supporting churches, over 250 clients, and 140 volunteers in several capacities. We serve the township of Lyons, South Proviso, and Riverside Townships. Our current programs are 90% of what we do is provide rides to older adults. We, all the places that I had said, physical therapy and all those. Our drivers stay with our clients during their appointment, so they're there when they get out and take them home. So it's like having your child with you. We have some small other programs that we do. We partner with Mariano's in Westchester. They give us their flowers every week that would otherwise be thrown away and then we work in our office with volunteers to repurpose them into small vases and then we have volunteers deliver them to our birthday clients that month. Or we partner with businesses in the area and allow them to give them away with our brochure to bring an awareness to our organization. We work with the La Grange Park Garden Club, the La Grange Garden Club, so we're real interested in partnering with other businesses and nonprofits. We started last January a library homebound delivery service. After I met with some libraries, there was a big need for delivery for people, again, who can't get out, although we'll take material to anybody who's homebound regardless of their age. So if someone breaks their leg and they're incapacitated for six weeks, we'll still do that. We partner with youth in the community, so we don't let teens drive our older adults, but we'll work with them on some of these other deliveries. So we are working on building a larger teen volunteer program. All people need to do is call their library. La Grange Park is one of those. We just added Brookfield last week, so we now have five local libraries. We offer friendly visitation once or twice a month for people who might be isolated and it helps with their social ability. So we have trained volunteers who will go out and play cards or visit, have a cup of coffee. So we don't do any of the home care needs that the home health agencies do. We don't dispense medication. We don't take them on errands. We don't do housekeeping. It's simply a visit. We also offer wellbeing phone calls, so it sounds like maybe Mike and I should have a conversation. We can maybe partner on that. Same concept, people who are alone or would like that well check weekly, we can provide that. We have volunteers willing to do that. We offer a triannual newsletter. Our volunteers get an e-blast, but our clients like to get that paper copy in their hand, so we keep them up to date on things that are going on in the community. We offer a card ministry. Again, we partner with youth groups and church youth groups. They make cards for us and so we'll send those out at the different holidays. We partner with St. Barbara's in Brookfield for holiday meal delivery for people who would otherwise be home alone on a holiday. So that's Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. We have a referral and resource service, so we really don't turn anybody away if they have a need for a real estate agent who specializes with older adults. We have those resources. I serve on the Aging Care Communities Community Resource Network Committee, so we're always made aware of someone who will go to someone's home to do their hair if they can't get out. A handyman service, elder law attorneys, things like that. How to become a client? All you have to do is call our office, and I left a stack of brochures with Sandy, to get an intake form. So we need some basic information and some medical information, emergency contacts on people. They need to live within those townships that I mentioned. We're looking to expand those as well. They complete that, we need five days' notice when they need a ride. So some of our folks think that we're like an Uber or a Lyft where we have drivers on hand and we don't. We schedule our drivers. So we do need five days' service, five days' notice for service. All of our drivers are volunteer and we partner with our clients' families to partner with those rides. Volunteer opportunities include volunteer drivers. We're always looking for drivers because people come and go. We have snowbirds or people who take time off to be with their grandchildren. And we're looking for people for the well check calls, the pedal pushers. We have volunteers who come in and work in our office and help us with some office administration. We do outreach projects. Last year, we delivered home baked cookies to 90 area older adults. We start with people who live alone because we collect that data and then we will reach out to people who live in the senior living facilities, Plymouth Place, Bethlehem Woods, La Grange Point. We host an annual luncheon and a volunteer appreciation, so we like to take good care of our volunteers. And we're privately funded, so we don't receive state or federal funding. We don't charge our clients for rides. We don't turn anyone away for inability to pay. We count on community support, so we have a lot of businesses who back us. Our funding sources are an annual event that we host in the fall. We have grants. We work with the Wise Men's Club here in town through their Christmas tree sale, church women's groups, the Rotary of La Grange. Community Memorial Foundation funds us, as does Healthy Communities Foundation out of Riverside, so we're always writing grants. We get donations from clients, so we have people who are able to donate to us and we have people who are not, and we take them regardless of that. We get in-kind, stock donations. The churches who support us pledge money every year, so we get 100% participation in the 14 churches. And then we do appeals. So we did a holiday appeal. We plan to do one with the physicians. So we track our destinations. So I'm gonna go and visit all these doctors' offices that we bring their patients to constantly. The majority of our rides are to doctors' appointments. And then we're gonna do a Mother's Day and Father's Day appeal this year. We get legacy gifts, bequests, memorials, people leave us in their will. The majority of our funding is spent on our programming. Some of it is on administrative costs like the software scheduling that we use and very little is spent on office supplies and things like that. Where we are now, we rent space in the First Presbyterian Church of La Grange. We used to be housed in the Aging Care Connections Building. We had a tiny office, no windows inside, loved the people, but we were all on top of each other. And so when the beds office moved to their new facility on Ogden and East Avenue, we took over their old office where they were for 30 years. So we have windows, we're on the second floor. It's beautiful. We have all their hand-me-down furniture and we love it. It's great. I've been the full-time executive director for two and a half years. We have three part-time staff who schedule rides and do administrative work. And we use a P.O. box for our mailing purposes. Our clients typically don't come to our office because they don't need to. We rebranded our logo last year, so we might look a little different and we're getting our name out, so this is a great opportunity to share with older adults in the community and their children who are looking for services. Thank you for this opportunity and what questions might you have?
Janet, thank you, and I want to commend your group on all the work that you do for our community. My question to you is what can we do for you? Are we doing enough? Can we do anything else?
I mean, I think you can continue what we're doing. Julia and I met last year and she offered to put a little blurb in your weekly news blast and I believe we got five or six volunteer drivers who saw that. So that's working. So we're hoping to replicate that in other towns. We serve a lot of communities within those townships. So that's key. You're really right now the only one who does that.
Beautiful.
So continuing to get the word out because the older adults who live at home alone might not know about us. So police, fire should have a stack of our brochures and just be aware that we're here to serve the clients.
Any comments from the board? Trustee Lottner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, just, not that I have anyone in particular in mind, but what's your minimum young age that is eligible for this?
For a client or for a volunteer?
Yep, for a client.
60 and above.
Okay.
But if people are in their 50s and they have special circumstances, for instance, we had a woman in her mid-50s who has MS and didn't have any, she's divorced and her daughter was at college. We'll take that client.
Interesting. And then how about volunteers? Down to teenagers, it sounds like.
We would love to sign you up to be a volunteer. Yes.
Some of them are probably younger than me.
The minimum age to drive is 23, so out of college. But we'll work with youth because we have other things that they can help us with.
Thank you.
Trustee Rocco?
Yeah, I was just, thank you so much. What a wonderful concept in what you do. My question was, when you're talking about home healthcare agencies where they provide healthcare, do you, is there, when you're saying get the word out, is that an angle where you would want to get the word out to where they would like, you know, home health? For example, my sister's at home healthcare. So would that be something, give her your name, like so that she could give to somebody older who would take advantage?
Yes, that'd be great. Because we provide resources to people and we like to give them more than a few so they can make a choice for what's best for them.
Maybe a way to get the word out. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. As somebody who has parents that are in a situation like that, they don't live close, but my dad's 30 miles away and he's blind, and they don't have anything like this in July. So I just had to say what a heartwarming, wonderful thing it is to hear what you do and the people that volunteer. And if I ever get a moment to volunteer, I would love to because as I said, I'm doing the lift with dad and all that stuff and that they stay with him, I just can't say enough. It's really, not only a vital service, a wonderful service, it's very heartwarming. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. We would love to have you as a volunteer driver.
Well, you've got Bob and now you've got Scott. I'll go, I'm good.
And what's your, what's the name of Interfaith?
Interfaith Community Partners.
And is there, do you have a website?
We do.
Interfaith Community Partners?
Dot org.
Dot org. Thank you.
Janet, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have public participation of agenda-related items only. Would anyone care to address the board? Moving on to consent agenda, Amanda?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes, village board meeting November 27, 2018. Executive session meeting November 27, 2018. Village board meeting December 11, 2018. Work session meeting January 8, 2019. B, action e-pay agreement, motion to authorize the finance director to execute the necessary agreements to transition to the new Illinois State Treasurer e-pay program. C, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries is itemized in the check registered. D, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and February 26, 2019 with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on February 26, 2019.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Moving on, village managers report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just one item to report this evening and that item is included in your packet this evening. This item is for discussion only and no action is required from the board at this time. This item is involving an Invest in Cook grant for the village of Brookfield. The purpose of this discussion tonight is to get the village board's feedback on whether there is support for this particular project for which the village of Brookfield has received partial funding. So in, last year, in 2018, the village of Brookfield received an Invest in Cook grant for a Phase 1 study for a regional bike path. This study also includes a study for the intersection at 31st Street and Maple Avenue for which we have partial jurisdiction. We share that with the village of Brookfield. The grant application that they sent to Cook County was for $170,000 and the village of Brookfield was awarded half of that, so 50% at $85,000. So more specifically, and there is some information included in your packet, the scope of the project of the corridor study includes two major areas. One is for a preliminary engineering study for a bike path along 31st Street which starts on Prairie Avenue and goes eastwardly towards First Avenue. The second part of the study area, the corridor study, is for a feasibility study for improvements at the Maple Avenue intersection on 31st Street. So the concern related to the intersection is that there's a number of accidents that have occurred there over the years. They want to improve the safety to that intersection. And in our discussions, when meeting with the village of Brookfield, they wanted to study this intersection because perhaps adding left turn lanes at this intersection, it might improve the safety at the intersection and reduce the number of crashes that occur there. In order to add left-hand turns at this intersection, it is likely, highly likely, that through a study, the intersection would have to be increased in its size, which may require obtaining additional land from the private property or state of Illinois land that's located there in order to accommodate those safety improvements. It's really uncertain at this time. So that's why they put in the grant application to Cook County, to look at this particular intersection and also look to see if they could get preliminary engineering for the bike path. So the two are included together as a package and that is called the 31st Street Multimodal Corridor Impact Study. The information that the village of Brookfield has, that they have received back from Cook County, was that they are not going to get full grant support for the total cost of this study. The total cost of the study is $170,000 and since they have agreed to provide only partial funding at 50%, they have reached out to neighboring communities to see if there is support to move forward on this study. So they have reached out to the villages of Riverside, North Riverside, and La Grange Park to see if there is support for this study, both in terms of providing support that this is a great idea and help with letters of support to the county and to the state and anybody else that may provide us with funding. But also if funding does not become available to help fill that gap, that we may be willing to pitch in some financial support as well. So there's a couple of areas or a couple of components of this discussion I think it's important to note. And Paul Flood was at the meeting with the village of Brookfield. He was there with me, so he's a good resource for us tonight, okay? So he's here if we have any questions. And Rick Ratty was also at that meeting as well. So I have a couple of folks here at the table in case if there's questions. So here, the village of Brookfield is looking at a preliminary Phase 1 study for these two particular areas. They know that if the study pans out well in terms of feasibility study for the intersection and if the preliminary engineering for the bike path looks good, that they, that there is a potential for construction for this total project. So that would be, come later on down the line. And so the village of Brookfield has also reached out to the WCMC and the Central Council of Mayors to see if, you know, if they were to get support and they were to move forward with the studies for these areas, would there be support for the construction and completion of these projects? And on a very preliminary, fair to say, Paul, very preliminary level, the Central Council of Mayors has provided their support so long as funding becomes available and they would try to pursue it, although it's very early to tell, but they would try to pursue funding for construction of these two areas at an 80/20 split. So what that means is funding, grant-funded through federal funds that become available at 80% with a local match at 20%. So this is all very early. This is all very new information, but the village of Brookfield is seeking this community's feedback in terms of support for at least this first phase, Phase 1, which includes the intersection as well as the bike path. And with that, I will take any questions?
Anybody want to start the conversation? Trustee Messick?
It's really hard to be preliminary without having any idea what it's gonna cost, I mean, and what really the scope is, but I mean, I can support it if I have some information. And what, there's only a little bit that's our, that's La Grange Park, right, in that intersection? One corner? Part of one corner?
Right. So we've had, so we've had a lot of discuss, I've had a lot of discussion with Paul about, well, what, you know, since there was no specific ask, and what might we be looking at? And so we really just have some very preliminary numbers to look at, to look at. So in terms of a study, the estimate is that the study for the area, the corridor area, is $170,000, correct?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly. Okay, so that's just the first phase. And so it's grant-funded, that leaves the $85,000 gap. It really depends on which of the communities are willing to provide financial support and to what extent this village believes that we should be providing a proportional share of that local share. And as to, to answer your question related to the intersection, we're, yeah, 20, we own 25, or 25 in our jurisdiction. None of it's ours, but 25% of it is in our jurisdiction. So we would look to those types of, you know, that type of information to kind of look towards a proportional share of, you know, what we might offer up in terms of a support. I think that looking for support for the entire project as a package, but, you know, the challenge is for us is, you know, determining, you know, how much of this total corridor study do we want to contribute to? Okay? The second part of the study, or the second part of where this might go with regard to construction, you always have to look down the line a little bit. In talking with Paul, it's estimated that the total cost of construction for both the bike path and the intersection would be about $2 million, and about 750,000 to 800,000 would be attributable to the intersection improvements. It is so early to tell because we don't even have a feasibility study for the intersection. So if that gets funded with federal aid at an 80-20 match, that would certainly remove a lot of relief from coming up with the local share. We don't have to make any decisions at this point because it's so, so early.
Good, because, yeah, good, because I couldn't make a decision without any kind of information anyways. Thanks.
Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Definitely in the name of safety, I think we'd all be supportive of trying to reduce accidents at that intersection. I guess my thought as far as the bike trail or the bike path, what reasoning are they giving that you can go seven blocks to the north and not have to worry about going through residential sidewalks or commercial areas in Brookfield? And then to piggyback on that, what would, what would this, where would they stop in saying, okay, now LaGrange Park, we want to pick it up at Salt Creek and connect to First Avenue?
There, it is. I'd say.
Yeah, we want to touch that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As was expressed to us, it's a connection of some existing bike routes that have previously been put in place through North Riverside and Riverside. So they had spoken about bringing it from First Avenue to Prairie Avenue in Brookfield and terminating it there at the sidewalks. So that, that kind of is the intent, I think, from Brookfield's perspective, who is obviously the lead agency. We were there, as was North Riverside and Riverside, just to try to gauge our support for the project broad scope. And I think more specific, they were really looking for our interest level to gauge that for the Maple and 31st Street intersection. But as was expressed to us at the meeting, the bike path would go from First Avenue and would extend west over to Prairie, act with their existing sidewalk system.
Okay. Thanks, Julia. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Mr. President.
From, from First Avenue to Prairie?
Yes, sir.
Along 31st Street. And as far as I recollect, the county owns the forest preserve on the north side, and they own the zoo on the south side. So why isn't the county taking hold?
Well, the county is an Invest in Cook.
Well, I don't think they do at all.
That's.
I mean, why are they relying on local government to help out with their bike path, basically?
I think Brookfield felt that they initially had arrived at that.
10%.
Yeah, with, with the county, and then were surprised when the county backed away and reduced their funding down to just half of what they were asking for.
That's because they're not getting any soda tax, that's why. I just find it hard to believe that this is county property. And for the safety of our residents, and I'm not, I'm not, believe me, Paul, for the safety of the residents that utilize that, or pedestrians that utilize 31st Street as a walkway to and from the zoo, it's on county property. I just find it hard that they're going to look at local government to help subsidize.
I think that was Brookfield's first intent as well, was to have the county fund the entire Phase 1 study. And when the county came back, and they thought they had a commitment to that, when the county came back to them and said that we're going to fund it at only half of what the request was for, Brookfield at that point felt that, you know, it would reach out to its neighbors to try to see if they could support. And I think we had talked about in the meeting a bit, us in tandem asking the county if that might.
Increase the contribution, yeah.
Okay, that's a great idea.
If there's some support, we could all go back to the county together and say, boy, this is a great project that would support our region, and could you increase that contribution to the full 100%?
Okay. Any, Trustee Raco?
I'm in agreement, because in terms of both of what trustees, Sheehan and Messick said, in terms of, you know, I would want more information, and I like the concept, because at first I was like, wait a minute, is this going to be like, we're going to divide it four ways? That's, you know, where I'm liking the way you're thinking, that there are, A, go to county, and B, you know, we may need to look at, because it is hard, especially because this is just a preliminary, preliminary study, and then, like you said, down, down the road, you know, so I know I would be looking at like our proportional share also.
Yes, Trustee Zora?
I just had a question about the expansion. I know this is preliminary, so we have no idea about expansion. But the corner that is ours, who would be, if we had expand, how would that even work? Because we don't own that corner, the property owner does. I mean, that's a whole nother problem with this, is how, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like it's unrealistic.
And that's sort of the purpose of the Phase 1. It's called an IDS, an intersection design study, where they would evaluate the geometry of that corner to see if there are any property acquisition that would need to occur. I suspect there is as well. Just in order to put a left turn, a dedicated left turn lane in there, I think you would have to.
Yeah, there's no space.
Pick up, go after some properties. That's part of the process, and they would also, as part of the Phase 1 or the intersection design study, try to determine what level of service you would.
Value in, in the work that was.
Yeah.
Could that even be decided after the $180,000 study, or is that's another six-figure?
That, that in theory is part of what information would result from doing that study.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, did you have a comment?
And then just following up on Paul's side, if there is condemnation that has to occur, it would probably be done by the state, because the state owns 31st Street and Maple, too.
Yes, sir.
So it's not our condemnation, that's the state's. So when you think about contributing proportionally either to this preliminary engineering or the ultimate project, think about what proportion you're talking about, because there's two projects here being considered as one. One is a bike path, none of which is in LaGrange Park, and the second is an intersection of which we own, or we have jurisdiction over one-fourth. So be careful of what you commit to in terms of our participation level.
Right.
Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, not to be redundant, I would need a lot more information to make any determination.
Do you need more direction, Julia, or?
No, I think that's good. So some of the additional information that was requested was, you know, accident numbers over the past five years for that particular intersection, which we put together, whether we wanted to go back to the county to see if they're, they were willing to give additional support for the grant. And then lastly, we requested more information about what their expectations were in terms of contribution and the estimated cost. So we have some estimates of costs from Hancock Engineering. We're just looking for more information from the village of Brookfield in terms of what they might be requesting from us. But certainly, we have our eyes on, you know, the scope of the project, where that project exists in terms of which jurisdiction, what proportionate share falls within our jurisdiction. We're looking at all of those numbers and what makes sense. What would make sense for LaGrange Park?
And that would be bisecting the program into, into the, the intersection and the bike path? Say the board doesn't want to have anything to do with the bike path because it's not in LaGrange Park, but we are interested in helping the intersection, can, can they be divided out? Okay.
Certainly, whatever level of support that we're willing to provide, we can define that proportionate share and offer it back to them and say, you know, we support this project at this particular level, and here is our justification for doing that.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Yes, Trustee Raco?
Just one question, I guess, and I think I might know the answer, but in terms of, okay, so they have the bike path that's going up to Maple, you know, the.
Prairie. The bike path is entirely in Brookfield from Prairie to First Avenue. Never mind. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Moving on, Administration Committee, Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have three items to report on, and then one item for discussion and action. First is to report on village offices to be closed on Monday, February 18, in observance of the President's Day holiday. Regular office hours will resume on Tuesday, February 19, at 8:30 a.m. Second item is regarding the Help Program, topical a little bit earlier this evening. Winter can be particularly challenging, a challenging time for some of our elderly and disabled residents. Please consider signing up for our Help Program. The program matches community volunteers with residents in need of assistance. When someone needs help with tasks like mowing, snow removal, or brush clearing, the village provides them the list of individuals who have indicated a willingness to be contacted and have signed up for the Help Program. The residents needing assistance contact the volunteers directly. And to sign up, please call Village Hall at 708-354-0225, or visit the village website at www.lagrangepark.org. And the last item to report on regarding community e-briefs, our very successful notification program to our residents. The village would like to encourage residents to stay connected with what is happening in LaGrange Park by signing up for our community e-briefs, which is our weekly electronic newsletter that is emailed out each Friday. The village currently has over 2,200 subscribers. Residents may sign up for the e-briefs by going to the homepage of the village's website at www.lagrangepark.org. And the last item is for discussion and action this evening regarding the proposed residential waste hauler contract. Briefly, to provide a little bit of background, our purpose this evening is to discuss further information regarding the residential collection and transportation of municipal solid waste for approval for the village of LaGrange Park. And recall that on January 8, at our village board meeting, at the work session, the village board reviewed and discussed proposals from their, from our three residential waste haulers, including our current provider, Republic Services, and two additional providers, Groot and Lake Shore Recycling Systems, LRS. Following our discussion, the village board requested that staff obtain additional information from Republic and LRS regarding options that are available for recycling of electronic waste, both curbside and event-based, and the use of RFID cards for the volume-based program or a pay-as-you-tip program. Staff has worked diligently since that time, and has worked with both providers or both organizations, and has pulled together additional information for us to consider that will recap some of the prior information that was, that was presented by Emily, and then the additional information that we had requested that she worked with LRS and Republic, and has put that together, and will present that as an overview before we continue our discussion. So Emily, I'll ask you to, to take over here.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. So I am going to just provide the board with a quick recap of what we discussed at the work session a couple weeks ago. As you know, we reviewed the process that the village went through in terms of soliciting proposals for a new residential waste hauler contract. We went through the survey results from the resident survey. We went through our program assessment of our current program, and then we also talked about what were the, what the components of the RFP were that we were looking for. In total, there were six program alternatives that we asked the haulers to bid on. And then we discussed the proposal pricing that we received from three haulers, including Republic, Groot, and Lake Shore Recycling Services. We compared our hybrid program with an all toter program. We reviewed the programs in other communities, and then we talked a little bit about what a transition process might look like if the village were to transition to a new hauler. So that's what we've covered so far. The items that the board requested staff follow up on, the top two were the primary ones, which was talking to the two providers that had the most competitive pricing, which was Lake Shore and our current provider, Republic, about options for electronics recycling, both at the curbside as well as annual events, which has been the way we have handled electronics in the past. Also looking at whether or not an RFID or tipping program would be available to our residents. In subsequent conversations with trustees, there was also some interest expressed in looking further at the recycling program of both haulers and how they manage the materials that they are picking up. And then the last item is not something that the board requested, but is something that staff initiated with Lake Shore, and that is related to the food waste and organics costs, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. So with regard to the electronics recycling, I did speak with Republic Services and had them walk me through what their options are for electronics recycling. They do not offer a curbside pickup program, but they do offer a mail-in program. So residents are able to call Republic Services and order a box, which Republic will then mail to them. Residents can then pack up their recyclables in that box and mail them back for recycling. They also indicated that they would be willing to staff a single-day recycle events, but those would be pay-as-you-throw events. So residents would be responsible for paying for whatever it is that they are bringing for recycling. With regard to Lake Shore, I had a discussion with them as well. They do offer a curbside pickup program for residents. That's a sticker-based program. Residents do not need to call in advance for that program, and it's typically structured as a three-tier program. They did indicate that they could be flexible and structure the program in different ways, but this seems to be a structure that works well for them. So a small item would be one sticker, a medium item or a brown bag, like a grocery bag of items, would be five stickers, and then a large item such as a computer or a TV would be 10 stickers. Residents would just set that out at the curb on their regular pickup day, and that would be picked up by the hauler. Lake Shore does not staff single-day events, but they did indicate for some of their communities that they can drop off boxes at a particular location, such as our public works facility. We could hold the event, and then they would come and pick up those materials. With regard to the RFID program, Republic Services did indicate that they are able to provide an RFID or a tipping, a pay-as-you-tip program. We did ask them to provide pricing for what that program would look like in our community. They did not provide any pricing, and they simply indicated that they did not think that would be a cost-effective program for us. With regard to Lake Shore Recycling Services, they also indicated that they can provide this service. They currently provide the service to two other communities in Illinois, Wheaton and Highland Park. And the program, this is kind of the summary of how it would look, how it would be structured, residents would be able to choose from three-size toters, the 35, the 65, and the 95-gallon. Only the 35-gallon toter would be a pay-as-you-tip toter under this program. So the 65 and 95-gallon would continue to be a monthly subscription fee like residents pay now, and those who have the 35-gallon would only pay when they set their toter out at the curb. So the toters all contain these RFID chips in them. When the truck picks the toter up to empty it, it reads that chip, it goes into their electronic system, and they're able to then charge that account. They did stress with me that they have a number of safeguards in place to ensure the accuracy. accuracy of the system, and they are here, as is Republic, so certainly they could answer questions, but a couple of the examples they provided were with regard to the toters having to be within a certain proximity of the truck. They have to be lifted to a certain height before they're read. They can only be, they might be scanned more than once a day, but they can only charge the account once a day. So they have tested this pretty significantly. They're pretty confident in terms of the accuracy of the program and being able to prevent erroneous charges to residents. It does require that residents who are participating in this program maintain an auto renewal account with Republic, or, excuse me, with Lake Shore. So they indicated that the minimum amount would be $5, but there does have to be a balance on the account so that when the refuse is picked up, that account can be charged for that tipping fee. The way that they explain it is it's an eye pass for your garbage. So it works in a very similar way. This is a little challenging to read on the screen, so I apologize for that. This is the program pricing that Lake Shore submitted. This is the chart that was included in the overall RFP, which they filled in for the RFID program. So the area highlighted in blue are the program costs, and then the area highlighted in red are the individual tipping fees per year. You don't really need to look at that right now. We'll provide some examples of what those fees would mean for an individual resident in a few slides. With regard to the recycling program, I did have a conversation with Republic about how they handle the recycling of materials. As many of you probably know with what's been happening in the news, that recycling has become more challenging for a number of haulers. A lot of those materials were going overseas to China. China has restricted what they're willing to accept, and that has put some pressure on the market for these materials. So Republic indicated that the recyclable material that they collect from our community goes to a third-party processor. They do have facilities in other parts of the country, but they do not have a facility that our material is going to. So it's going to a company called Resource Management. What Republic shared with me is that about 10% of that material that gets processed through Resource Management can actually be then resold, and the rest goes to the landfill. So I think that's correct. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I understood from the conversation. The material that they are able to, that Resource Management is able to pull out is resold and is typically shipped overseas. The Republic also indicated that with the current market for them, it is cheaper to landfill the material than to recycle it, because they do have to pay a processing fee for all of the material that goes to Resource Management, whether or not that material can be resold. So there is a cost to that. One of the things that they stressed with me in our conversation was that they are working hard to get out ahead of this issue, and that they have been focused on education and outreach to not only their member communities, I think, but to interest groups and other organizations. So their focus has really been on educating the public about how do you improve the quality of the material that you're recycling? How do you ensure that when residents are putting those recyclable materials in their toters, that they are clean, that they're not contaminating the other items in there, so that when they get to the processing plant, you can increase the likelihood that those can then, those materials can be reused? So one of the things I wanted to mention is you'll recall that with Republic's proposal, the monthly minimum fee for the hybrid program, the program we have now, included a variable component. So a portion of the 581, which is the current fee, was fixed, and then a portion of it was considered a variable recycling fee. I think it was $1.45 of that 581. So that $1.45, that amount would fluctuate depending on the cost of recycling. So if recycling costs went down, then that $1.45 portion of the 581 might go down as well. So one of the things that I asked them about as well, given that that is, that there may be a potential for some savings there, what is it that residents could do to see that savings? And basically what they indicated to me is residents need to do a better job with what it is that they're recycling and how clean those materials are. So I think that's, that would be a bit challenging for us to really see how those savings would materialize, because obviously we're not the only ones that have material going to Resource Management. Presumably, Republic is taking materials from other communities that they're collecting from as well. With regard to Lake Shore recycling, I had a conversation with them as well about their recycling program. They do own a facility that is located in Forest View, so they take all of their materials to the facility that they own. They've indicated that they are able to successfully recycle and resell about 90% of the materials that they collect. I think depending on what they collect, that number can be a little bit higher. They did take a look at where their material is going, and they did confirm that 99.9% of their materials are being resold domestically. So I think they gave me some examples that they have, if I can say this right, cardboard that goes to Wisconsin and plastics that go to Alabama, and so most of it is staying here in the U.S. as opposed to being shipped overseas. Obviously, what can't be recycled is going into landfills. They have indicated that for them, recycling does remain profitable, and that their primary focus in dealing with the fluctuating market around recycling is on continuing to reinvest in their facility. They, I think their facility in Forest View is three years old. They've indicated that they recently reinvested another $2.5 million in the facility. They're trying to constantly upgrade the technology to improve the processing. And then they also talked a little bit about their facility management and the quality of the people they have in those facilities and running the facilities to ensure that they're being run efficiently and maximizing of what they can get from the material. So just a little side note on the food waste and organics recycling. As I mentioned, this was something that staff brought up with Lake Shore in a follow-up conversation. You'll recall that under the original RFP, we did ask haulers to submit a price for food waste or organics recycling. Republic came in with a pretty competitive price on that, which was $210 annually. Lake Shore's price was quite a bit higher, at $280 annually. As part of our follow-up conversations, I just asked Lake Shore if they would come down and meet Republic's price on that, if they would reduce their price to $210, and they actually ended up reducing their price to $160 annually. So I just wanted to note that change in the proposal for you. I did not go back to Republic and ask them if they would bring their price down further. That might be something they're willing to do. The purpose of the conversation was just to get matched pricing. It was not necessarily to see who could come in at the lowest price, but we certainly could go back and ask Republic about that as well, if the board wanted me to. Okay. So with regard to the individual resident savings, for those of you that saw the trustee inquiry that came out earlier this afternoon, one of the trustees had asked staff to take a look at a typical user of our refuse program and what they might save over these five programs that we're looking at. So the five programs are the status quo program with Republic, which is our current hybrid program, the all toter program with Republic, the volume hybrid program that we have now with Lake Shore, the RFID program with Lake Shore, and then the all toter program with Lake Shore. So those are the five programs that we're looking at. So this first column shows the scenario for three typical users. This was a bit of a challenging exercise for staff, because we don't really have a typical user of our program. We have about 50% of our community that is using stickers and 50% that is using toters. So for the 50% that are using toters, that is split almost evenly between 65 and 95. I think it's a difference of like 30 or 40 households. So it's a pretty even split there. And then for the sticker users, it's really hard to know what the average number of stickers are that people are using, because that is just not data that is collected. So, and because we have the same sticker for both yard waste and regular refuse, it's hard to know what people are using those stickers for. So we had to use some estimates. We did talk with Republic and with Lake Shore to try to get an understanding of what is a reasonable number to use for an average user, and that's where we came up with the 2.5 stickers, the 2.5 stickers a month. So that's a monthly number that you see there. So you can see, this is costed out, so the first, this first chart is Republic's pricing. So this would be if we just continued the program we have now with Republic. This would be the pricing for users that use 2.5 a month, 65-gallon toters and 95-gallon toters. So you can see the total cost over five years of the program. And then if we were to stay with Republic but switch to an all toter program, you can see down here what the cost of the program over five years would be for each of those typical residents using that program. And then this last column here, the savings column, is comparing these costs to this status quo program. So if we were to go to the, sorry, this is shaking now. If we were to go to the Republic all toter program, people that would be using the 35-gallon toter would actually be paying $183 more than they would pay if we just stayed with the hybrid program. People who would move, people on the 65 and the 95-gallon toters would actually realize the savings of about $140 a year. So that's how you read that chart. So this next page is showing the pricing, the scenario applying the pricing for Lake Shore's three programs. So again, the top program is the hybrid program. If we were to continue our current program but move to Lake Shore recycling, you can see that under our current program, residents would save $84, $71, and $89 if we just used this, if we, if we went with the exact same program but we went with Lake Shore, that's what they would save over if we stayed with Republic. So a little bit of savings there, but again, that savings is over five years, so it's not a huge savings. This is the RFID program with Lake Shore. So again, comparing the RFID program to staying with Republic on the hybrid program, you can see the savings is a little bit more significant here, at least as it relates to the 35-gallon toter, where those users would save $204 a year, or, excuse me, $204 over five years. The 65-gallon user would save $71 over five years, and the 95-gallon would save $89 over five years. Where you see the larger savings for an individual user is under the Lake Shore all toter program. So that's where you would see over five years, a savings of $35 for the 35-gallon toters, a savings of $230 for the 65-gallon toter users, and a savings of $296 for the 95-gallon toters. So questions on this before I jump to the next set of numbers? Trustee Raquel?
Thank you. I just had one question. Is it, the, because, you know, and maybe this could be, as I notice that like our table is being too charted, can you, can you opt, or probably, I already know the answer, maybe I, you can't do it, some people can't do the all toter, or some people can't do the RFID, right? Like, I mean, I was thinking the 35-gallon people are going to want to do the RFID, but it's got to be all or nothing, right? Everyone?
Right. So the, exactly. So either everyone is participating in the RFID program, or everyone is participating in the all toter program. The, I think one thing to note, though, is that the toter prices for the 65-gallon and the 95-gallon users, it's the, the subscription price is actually the same under both programs, but under the RFID program, there is the minimum service charge. So that minimum service charge that is on the water bill now, which is $5.81, that minimum service charge continues on the RFID program. It would be $5 under the RFID program, but that continues. So that's why the 65 and 95 toter users are actually paying more under that program than they're paying under the all toter program, because they're having to pay that monthly fee that they pay now.
And the 35-gallon doesn't pay it, is that?
They pay it too.
So, and these prices reflect that $5 increase in the, in the?
They do.
Not that, but these right here, the actual dollars, like, you know what I mean, so I can see it.
Are you talking about the next chart, the community-wide chart?
1325 per, okay.
So. Any other questions on this one?
I just had a question, not specifically on this. What's the division of sticker users now and toters? Is it 50?
It is technically, according to our survey and the data that we got from Republic, it's about 51% on the volume-based sticker program and 49% on the toter program. So pretty much evenly split. Okay. So this is the overall community savings. So the other question that arose from a trustee is what is the, what will the community save overall with these different programs? Not just an individual user, but the comprehensive savings. So this is a, is a very brief summary of Table 2, which was passed out to the board. So this table that has the numbers for all five years on it is summarized here. I tried to just limit the information. So with Republic Services over five years, again, the hybrid program is what we're considering the status quo program. So there's no savings there, it's just what we would be moving forward with if we didn't make a change. Under the all toter program, if we were to move to an all toter program with Republic, there would actually be an increase in cost to the community of $41,349. So the community overall would pay that much more over five years for the all toter program under Republic. With regard to Lake Shore, if we were to move to the hybrid program with Lake Shore, so the program we have today, but a different provider, over five years, residents would save $351,470 by just changing providers, essentially. If we were to move to an RFID program with Lake Shore, over five years, the community would save just shy of half a million dollars over the status quo program with Republic. And then if we were to move to the all toter program with Lake Shore, that's where the community would see the largest savings, and that would be a savings of about, almost $681,000 over five years. So questions on these numbers? Trustee Raquel?
One of the things, too, is to mention here, is that, because I would imagine the biggest savings for the all toter is because the, most people are getting the 65 more than the 95, Peyton, I would think that.
So what we assumed with, in this analysis, is that everyone who is on the sticker program would move to a 35-gallon toter. So some very, some may very well move to a 65, but we assumed that because they're on the volume program now, they're going to go to a 35-gallon. One thing to keep in mind, sorry, with the all toter program, is that there's a senior rate included in the all toter program. That senior rate does not exist in the RFID program.
My point is this, though, in terms of that, the, I guess that's why I was asking, the majority of people right now using 65, who do the toter, 65, because I've got a feeling that a lot of the people who are using 65, if they were offered 35, would actually go down to 35. They're using 65 because it's the minimum one. You know, I mean, have we considered, you know, there's, so I would imagine that most people who are in the toter are using the 65 of that, what percentage would go down to 35?
So right now, for 65-gallon toter users, we have 984, and for 95-gallon toter users, we have 947.
Okay.
So it's very close, different of what, that's 40, just a difference of slightly under 40. So you're right, there may be some people who are taking the 65-gallon because there's no other option. So it's possible that they might move to the 35-gallon, but if they're putting that 65-gallon toter out with any regularity, they're going to be better off staying with that, because once you tip that toter twice a month, you're better off with the subscription 65 program. So it's, the value in that, the RFID or the tipping program, is really only for those people who are only going to tip it, you know, once a month or one and a half times a month on average. Once you start to get to two or two and a half, you're better off with the subscription program, price-wise.
Look at the 65-gallon, it's, you know, it's 1525 or 1828, RFD rather, 1828, right? For a 65-gallon, and for two tips, it's 1175.
Well, I'm going to find that pricing form.
I'm in your third attachment.
So for the 35-gallon, for the, the tipping fee is 350, and the 65-gallon is 13, 13 a month. Yeah, so seven, so maybe closer to three tips. So, so yes, there may be some people that would move from that 65 down to the 35. So, so yes, there may be some people that would move from that 65 down to the 35, but I don't know that we have a good way to estimate what that movement would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Emily?
Thanks, Emily. And first of all, thanks again for all the hard work in looking at this.
Yes.
26 ways from Sunday, so to speak, but, you know, which I think is really helpful to look at the, at the, as big of a picture as we can in this. What's not shown here in one of the discussion items that we had is the impact on staff.
Yes.
And how that might somehow weigh into the equation, depending upon which way we might go, and maybe if you could talk a little bit about that.
Certainly. So, so one of the challenges that we have had historically with the hybrid program, which I think is nate to the program and not necessarily the hauler, so I do want to say that, is that because of the nature of the program, we tend to get more complaints from those users than we do our toter users. Because people are putting out bins without lids, material blows out of those containers, those containers cannot be picked up automatically by the truck, so they get picked up manually and they can crack and break, they can blow and be hit by cars, you know, there's all kinds of things that can happen with those, and we get complaints from residents when those get damaged or if they disappear. So the sticker users tend to be the ones that we hear from more frequently. I also think that may be a result of the fact that they don't have a strong relationship with, as strong of a relationship with the hauler as our toter users do. So our toter users are billed directly by Republic services. So they know who to call, and they have that relationship with them if they have an issue. Our sticker users don't have that, that tie to Republic necessarily, so if they have an issue, I think they tend to call the village first. So I think that's just a product of the program itself. In addition to that, there are costs associated with the sale of the stickers. So we're selling 75,000 to 78,000 stickers a year in the community. That's not all being sold by village staff, because some of it's being sold by Jewel and Ace and I think even 7-Eleven, but the majority are sold by our staff. So there's also some costs associated with that, and then some, some staff time associated with the billing. So we do have that minimum service charge, it's on the water bill. It's not a huge amount of time, but once a year when the rates change, we do have to have a staff member that goes in for the three months, the different areas receive their water bills, and change those rates. So there's some costs associated with that. We don't have a really sophisticated way to track the time that staff is devoting to administering this program, because we don't have a citizen request tracking system. But kind of using our best, our best estimates, staff came up with, we spend about 220 hours a year collectively on the refuse program. Again, that's everything from answering questions to selling stickers and recycle bins and things like that. So costing that out, we estimate that to be about $16,500 in staff time. So how does that change if we look at a different type of program? Again, if we just go to a hybrid program with a different hauler, I don't know that that changes. I think that amount probably stays about the same. But if we go to an RFID program, which is essentially the same program but using, using toters, we do estimate that staff time would be reduced, that time would be reduced probably by about 75%. So we imagine that our sticker sales would go down pretty significantly. We'd probably, instead of selling 78,000 a year, would maybe sell about 20. That's a number that, that Lake Shore provided us based on their experience with this program and the other communities they have it in. So there's still staff time associated with that, we will still get occasional complaints, but we think that that cost will go down quite a bit. And so that would save us, we estimate, a little over $12,000 a year in staff time. And then if we were to go to an all-toter program, we think there would be a further reduction in staff time. So rather than a reduction of 75%, we think probably a reduction of 80%. That sort of 5% differential, again, it's just our best estimate, but that's primarily because we're eliminating the need for that staff person to have to adjust the billing. Because under the all-toter program, the village does not handle any of the billing related to refuse. So that staff person who's involved in that, her time is then taken out of that. So that creates some additional savings of about $13,200 annually. So we go from about, if we went from our current program to an all-toter program, you're looking at what we estimate to be a staff savings of about, let's see, or going from $16,500 in staff time to about $3,300 in staff time. Best estimate.
So to make sure and understand correctly, it sounds like the most favorable or the most beneficial cost savings for the community, for the residents, first of all, and staff, is, first of all, to go to an all-toter program?
If you're looking at dollars, the greatest savings is definitely with the all-toter program through Lake Shore.
Well, that's, yeah, that would maximize. I mean, going, regardless of vendor, going to an all-toter program saves, and the maximum savings is if it goes to LRS.
Not quite.
Okay.
So based on the pricing we received from Republic, if we go to an all-toter program with Republic, there is an increase in cost to the community.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's, there's a save, there's that staff time, we would still see that savings in staff time, but the community would not see that savings in terms of the program cost. In order to see that savings in terms of the program cost, we would have to go to an all-toter program with Lake Shore.
And if we do that, does that automatically imply it's a, it's a three-day cycle?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent point. So if the, if the, the board wants to stay with a one-day, one-day refuse pickup, our current day, which is Thursday, then that option is only available through Republic. If the board decides they want to go with Lake Shore, that means we do have to move to a three-day collection schedule.
If we did move to LRS, what's your best estimate on transition time? Longer the better, but...
That's a great question. So there, there are really two different scenarios we have talked about with Lake Shore on this. One is if we go to the RFID program. So because there is some lead time required with the RFID program in terms of just educating residents on how the program works, getting electronic accounts with balances set up and things like that, Lake Shore recommends that if we were to move to that program, that we do that in year two of the contract. So they said they could do it in year one, but their recommendation is year two. So we would continue with the program we have now for the first year and spend that first year kind of gearing up and educating people and preparing them for moving to the RFID program in the latter four years of the contract. So they recommend a longer transition time for that program. If we were to move to an all-toter program with them, that's a much shorter transition time. I can't remember, I think they gave me a date, like, they can do it in like 30 days, but they don't want to do it in 30 days, they would love to have more time than that. So the more time, the better. But one thing that really came out in our discussions when we did the reference checks, because we did do reference checks, we talked to a number of communities that have transitioned from a waste hauler to Lake Shore. None of them were with Republic, they were with other waste haulers, so I do want to say that. But they transitioned from a different waste hauler to Lake Shore, and they all really stressed how smoothly the transition went. So they, they felt that it could not have gone better, that Lake Shore worked very closely with their staff and did an excellent job in communicating to residents to smooth that transition. Also, our village manager did have a conversation with the gentleman at the, thank you, West Cook Solid Waste Agency, who put the RFP together, he worked with me in putting the RFP together. So she did have a conversation with him as well about Lake Shore, and he mentioned that they have done more of these transitions in the last several years than any other hauler, and they really have it down to a science. So there's always, I think, some pains when you're making a big change for the community, but staff feels very comfortable that they will be able to manage it very well regardless of the lead time, I guess. But still, more is better.
Does ours current contract have performance standards or performance requirements? If that can be discussed?
It does have certain requirements in it. It does not have any type of sort of performance guarantee where there's really any type of penalty. I think there are, if there's some sort of gross violation of the contract, then there's, there's provisions in there in terms of how we can get out of the contract. But there's no types of provisions in there where if the provider failed to do something, they would have to credit us a dollar amount or anything like that.
The best efforts type of verbiage. So that, that would be typical in a potential new contract.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Right.
Well, and when you think about it, trustee Lutner, the service agreement really exists between the residents and the hauler.
Oh.
So if, especially in the all-toter program, because the village is entirely removed from billing and everything. So if a resident has a problem with its garbage pickup, that resident's going to deal with Lake Shore or Republic on that, not us. Which is one of the advantages of getting out from under this.
So any recourse would be just to get the village involved from, on their behalf, but no legal connection, no legal requirement?
There's still a franchise agreement, and the village would still have an overall right to terminate if the service, if the village deemed that the service was so poor across the board that it warranted termination. But as to individual issues, they're going to be ironed out with, between resident and hauler.
Is it a foregone conclusion or requirement that, that you're, we would move toward an RFID aspect? I mean, it sounds to me like that's not required. They said year two would be preferable, but we may elect to never go to that, right? I mean, it's not required.
It's not required. They have indicated that they have, they put those chips in all of their carts, and they have been doing that for several years. So if we were to go to an all-toter program with them, the chips are already in all the carts that residents would receive. So if at some point in time, we wanted to consider an RFID program in the future, and they were amenable to doing that, depending on the contract terms, you know, that's something that we could certainly consider, but we would not be obligated to do.
And how soon would the electronic recycling program become available? Was that an immediate part of the program as well?
That would be immediate. So the contract would begin April 1st, and that would be available April 1st.
I don't think I have any more questions, I don't know if anybody else does, but...
Trustee Sheehan?
I love the relationship we have with Republic. It works. If it's not broken, don't fix it, but when it comes down to it, it's two things. We are duly sworn to keep costs down for our residents, and also being the keepers of the environment. Their recycling record is just astounding. So to me, it's going to come down to, even though I, everything's worked out great with Republic, it's going to come down to cost, and the environmental thing is a big issue, too.
Thank you, trustee Sheehan. Trustee Rocco?
It is difficult to, to, with Republic, we've had such a nice relationship with Republic, this is such a difficult decision. It's just so hard for us to, how can we, for our residents, not, I think, choose Lake Shore for the, like, for the two reasons that trustee Sheehan just said. I am still torn between trying to figure out which is better. I can appreciate that the overall saving, the savings both ways, but I can appreciate the overall savings in the toter program, all-toter program, but that RFID, I, it's just, 50% of our residents do use the sticker program, so that is going to be a huge adjustment for them, where we are, we're making it less by having a per-tip for them, where it's not as much of a, you know, and there's still savings for everyone, and in all departments. But on the same token, there are pluses to just going with that 30, because they could, like, I know myself, even the last, when we just met at the work session, you know, the RFID was not available, but I thought, well, I would be willing to pay the 1325 for the 35 gallon, because that's what kept me with the sticker program. I thought, well, I don't want a 65 gallon, you know? But now you're allowing that, so I'm willing, but now you're, so I was going that route, but with this RFID, that even makes it less expensive for the person who's used to that sticker program for the, you know, I'm torn. I'm torn at this point still. I'm trying, I'm trying to decide. There's pluses, because you said the staff, we don't have to worry about that. There's pluses because we don't, the billing, all the billing is through Lake Shore. These are huge pluses for us to go to the all-toter program, and I, and I'm recognizing those, but I'm still trying to, and I'm recognizing the overall savings of, you know, 180,000 more. But I don't know if it's going to be that high. Like I said, I think there's going to be people who are 65 who are going to be going down to 35.
Thank you, trustee Rocco. Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had one question. With the RFID, the first year, we would be doing the all-toter program, so are we paying the all-toter price or are we paying the RFID price for that one year?
So for the, if, if the board were to decide they wanted to move to the RFID program, we would actually be, the first year, we would be following the pricing for the hybrid program.
Oh, okay.
So we would continue with the program we have today, and residents would use stickers for the first year, and then we would move to the RFID program.
Okay. I'm echoing a lot of what the other trustees have said. I mean, I'm really disappointed with the 10% of what's currently getting recycled. I would honestly pay more to make sure that I had more of my recycling actually getting recycled. So that alone, for me, would make me move to Lake Shore. I feel like the cost savings is a huge bonus, but the recycling is really upsetting. I'm torn between the RFID and the all-toter, too. I definitely think we need to go all-toter either way. I don't, I think the sticker program, we need to get out of that, so the village is removed now, and we stop spending staff time. That's all. Thank you.
Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I don't, don't want to be redundant, so I will say, the recycling, I have to agree on that, that just the ratio between what's being recycled and what's being turned in is far superior with Lake Shore. We've had this discussion, whenever the last contract was, about the all-toter, and it sounds great, and it is in many ways, but there is a lot of residents that still are going to use one sticker a month, or, you know, one can a month, so that there's, I could see the RFID program, but I still think it's, that the part where it's going to hurt people or be, put more of an inconvenience on people is the smaller, especially senior families. And that, that was what, I was all on board for toter last time until I, until we had this discussion. The savings are obvious overall, but especially with, with either RFID or all-toter, for me alone, it's going to cost more money. I could go to the IFR, RFID, but somebody who does one can a month, maybe where the savings at. But I said I would, I would lean towards RFID or hybrid. But I said, we have to get a handle on the recycling. The other things are all good with Lake Shore, especially with Lake Shore, the cost difference is big.
If I could just respond to that, trustee Messick, because I think this may address some of the confusion surrounding how I responded to one of trustee Rocco's earlier questions. So under the RFID program, the tipping fee in year, technically it's year two, but year one of the program, would be $3.50. So if a resident were to, were to have, were to use one sticker a month, the total cost for that program for them would be $8.65, right? Because they're paying the minimum fee. So that's whether they're a senior or not. Under the all-toter program, let me get to that page here, the, the cost for the 35-gallon waste cart for a senior would only be 8.75 a month. So seniors would be paying 10 cents more a month to have the option to use that refuse toter for four times a month versus once a month. So that's the difference in terms of the impact to seniors. However, you are correct, and so was trustee Rocco, in terms of the impact to those who would be using the 35-gallon toter who are not seniors. So, because they would not see that discount with the senior rate under the all-toter program. Does that, does that clarify the impact a little bit?
Yes, yes, it does. I said, I don't know if we have a way to get a handle on the numbers of the 35-gallon type users that aren't seniors, but I said I've... type users that aren't seniors, but I said, I, I think it's substantial enough that we might be putting a bigger or more of an onus on some of the people who, the smaller users. Because when I say, I say seniors and smaller users, and I was using myself as an example, which is probably anecdotal, but I compost myself, so that, I don't even have to worry about what they charge for it. So that's out of the cycle. I have three children at home and three more that are there a lot, and I use one can every other week, sometimes one every three weeks. And so imagine a couple with no children or whatever. We may be looking at the RFID or type numbers with no, you know, with no senior. I just don't know the numbers, how many that would affect.
So our best estimate, and I think that's an excellent point, because we had those same conversations in trying to put together some of these estimates as it relates to typical users. So based on the census data, you know, 18% of our households are senior households. So that's the number that we used when we applied, when we did the analysis and applied the senior rate. We applied the senior rate to 18% of the 35, or 18% of the sticker users, to figure out how many of those would be seniors, and then when we transfer, when we, when we moved them into the 35-gallon toters, we applied the 18% to the 35-gallon users. That 18% is probably not accurate, because again, that takes into account all of the households in the community. We know we have a large number of households that are living in Plymouth Place and Bethlehem Woods who do not participate in the program. But, you know, a staff member also mentioned that in terms of the 35-gallon users, there probably are a larger portion of them that are seniors, because those households that have, you know, those larger households, a larger families and things like that, may be more likely to use a larger toter. So the 18% is the number we built into our assumptions, but we don't, we don't know that that's really accurate, that that may go up or may go down a little bit. It's just really hard for us to know what that number is. We don't have any better data than that.
Understood. And then I, just, I guess, one final thing. And that's where I, it's hard for me to make a decision. I've mentioned before, some people don't use it at all because they have, they have a business or whatever, and they throw their garbage out there. So I don't know where that affects. They obviously wouldn't pay a toter price, but I don't know where that does, affects the overall. But I just, I guess the final thing is, because I know a lot of talk about relationship and all, change is hard, but you also have to, you know, things move forward. We've all had to change some. In my industry, we changed. We also have to move forward with the, you know, with the time, so to speak. I said, the recycling being a huge issue. And doesn't mean that what comes next isn't good or better either, or that there's a new relationship coming down on the business end and for the residents, that that wouldn't be a positive relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Lautner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. How do you vet age? How do you vet the senior? And what's the definition? Is it 65, 60?
So the definition that the waste hauler would use is 65. How they vet that, I would ask them to respond to that. I'm not sure what their process is for verifying that someone is 65 or older.
But that's on them totally.
Yes, that would be on them totally. The village would not, not be involved in that process.
They're not looking at McDonald's for senior discount. You get senior discount at 50. I did have a question, and that is, how, I think it was answered before, thank you, or not, but it's in our package somewhere. How many years is this contract for?
It's a five-year contract.
Okay. And it can, and that's to get these prices in.
As I, as I try to look at the whole picture here and what we discussed, and appreciate the comments of my fellow trustees, and the significant amount of work that staff has done in interacting with the two options and trying to bring this together, which has gone on now a couple of months, and I know we're up against a timeframe where we need to, need to move forward one way or the other. And kind of just recollecting on the customer service focus, the impact to the customer, to the residents, the cost to them, the cost reductions to the village, the significant focus on recycling, the e-recycling options. I think I might have a point where I want to make a motion, and I will make a motion to direct the village manager to prepare and execute a contract with Lake Shore Recycle Services for the residential collection and transportation of municipal solid waste, incorporating a toter-only program, and subject to the approval of our village attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Trustee Lautner again?
Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of recapped what's led me to that recommendation, that motion, and as we've said several times here, you know, what problem are we trying to fix? What, you know, don't fix it if not broken. But I think there's a significant number of advantages to our community and to, and to the village itself. I think it's, you know, from a sustainability standpoint, it's an exciting story. I think there's options where we might go with technology improvements with RFID. I'm not sure that that's ready for prime time for us yet, but it's something that we, we could look toward. Think there may be some situations where it's not as maybe quite of a reduction as we think it might be, à la some of the commentary that Emily had made. But overall, I think it's an exciting story. We, we, as a, as a village, over the past few years, have had, had to go to the community and with the help of our staff, done an excellent job of explaining why we've, we've had bond issues for roads and for emergency equipment, which are significant increases to our village. The water rate increases that we've, that we've had to announce as a result of addressing the infrastructure, the aging infrastructure. I think this is an opportunity for a good story to our community of ways in which that we're working to try to reduce our overall cost to our community and our residents. So I feel strongly about the motion that I submitted.
Thank you, Trustee Lautner. You know, Rich has been very, very good to us, and so has Republic, and we're making a big assumption here, and we're taking feedback from Emily and Julia, that the quality's going to remain the same, because that's one of the big things that our community addressed, was the quality that we're receiving from Republic. And I'm hoping, and I hope that we, if we do go on this path, that we are getting the same quality. And the recycling is a given. You guys do a phenomenal job there. We make a lot of decisions where we spend a lot of residents' money, public money, as Trustee Lautner said. It'd be nice to go back to them at this point, and whatever works out with the RFID or the seniors, they're, they're not going to be impacted. We can't please everybody, but the fact that we're looking at saving our community a lot of money, I mean, when you look at 498,000, 98,000, or 680,000, depending upon the program, that is significant. And I don't know how that happens business-wise, because I'm not in the hauling business, but how the differential could be like that is amazing. And I think it's like throwing us a leaf that we cannot pass up, because here, we're going to our residents and saying, instead of spending your money, we're saving your money. So again, assuming that quality's going to remain the same. Trustee Messick?
That's it, all I got to say. I'm on board with, with Lake Shore and the savings, but I, I just cannot get 100% behind a toter-only. I said, I think, if RFID, maybe without a guarantee on RFID, I can't support toter-only, but I am on board with Lake Shore. I said, like you said, that the savings, even at 498 is significant.
Trustee Zora?
Thank you. I think there's no argument that the saving is huge, and it's, I mean, that's a person's salary over several years, so I think that's a no-brainer. But I agree, it is a difficult decision between the RFID and the toter program. So I'm going to wait till my vote to decide.
Any other comments? Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I am, I'm really, you know, I like the idea of the toter program. I, I do feel that, though, it, you know, that it's a five-year contract. It is a long contract, but yet, I just think it's a transition. And it's a transition, everyone's making a savings, and it's still a substantial savings with the RFID program, but yet, I think it's a slower transition for the sticker, people who are on the sticker. It's not going to be as drastic for them to go to the, to do the RFID. In fact, it'll be a savings, and there is a savings for all. And I also do think that some of those 65 gallons, now that we're offering the 35, may go down to 35, so that 180,000 differential, I think, we'll, we'll see a shrinkage with it. So at this point, I would be leaning towards the RFID for, I do think we need to, it's just more of a better transition from what we currently have.
Any other comments? Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like everybody said, and how I stated previously, too, we can't overlook the environmental footprint that this is going to have, too.
Okay, I'm going to reread the, the motion presented by Trustee Lautner. To direct the village manager to prepare and execute a contract to be determined for the residential collection and transportation with RLS, and subject to an all-toter with the approval of the village attorney.
LRS.
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 LRS. Yeah. She wrote LRS.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the all-toter.
LRS, okay.
Trustee Lautner, is that correct with the all-toter program?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda Call the role?
Trustee Messick?
No.
Trustee Rocco?
No.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora? Yes. Motion passes three to two.
You know, it's, it's all good. We're all saving.
Emily, thank you. Julia, thank you for all the hard work put going into this and providing us with all the information.
And that concludes my report. A discussion and action items from the administration area this evening, Mr. President.
And Representatives from Republic, if you can just take back to your bosses that LaGrange Park has been well-served by your services and reflected in the survey that was done with our community, where they were very grateful for the quality of service. Unfortunately, the financial aspect of it really became a big issue with, with this board, and it's no reflection on the quality of work that you provided us. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Lautner. Moving on to Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the Building Department activities for December of 2018. There were 29 building permits issued in December compared to 47 last December of 2017. The number of permits issued for calendar year 2018 were 1,005 compared to 942 in 2017. The estimated construction costs for the month were nearly $590,000, which was about 100,000 more than December of 2017. Estimated construction costs for the calendar year of 2018 were about $21.5 million compared to nearly $14 million in calendar year 2017. Permit fees collected were slightly up in December 2018 compared to December of 2017. They were $16,454.76 compared to just over $13,000. Permit fees collected for the calendar year 2018 were significantly up at nearly $478,000, which was nearly, or significantly, they were nearly $100,000 less in 2017, so they were up by $100,000. Eighty-three inspections were conducted in December compared to 107 in 2017. Six were not approved. Inspections conducted for calendar year 2018 were 1,378 compared to 1,597 in 2017. Inspections not approved in 2018 were 85 compared to 124 in 2017. The permit for the tenant build-out at 4:15 LaGrange Road was issued this month, actually December. The roughing for the walls inspection for C, S, J began in December. Electrical, plumbing, mechanical was substantially completed, and drywall installation began in December. Work continued on planning for the building code updates, and plans were submitted for a permit to renovate the interior office spaces at Generations Dental located at 1012 East 31st Street, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Before we move on, I would just like to congratulate our LRS for the professional and quality report you provided us, and for being so professional in your approach. We look forward to working with you, and thank you for, for providing us with the service that you're going to provide us with. Pardon? Yes, you may. Go ahead.
I just want to introduce myself first. My name is Bill Kenny. I'm the municipal manager for Lake Shore. I met some of you a couple of weeks ago at the workshop, and just wanted to thank you for this opportunity. Again, this is very, I grew up in LaGrange, so it's sort of a personal thing, too, but we're very excited to be here. We don't take lightly the relationship that you have with Republic. We respect them as a company. They're an excellent competitor, and our job is to come in here and just knock your socks off with service, and we're going to do that. We're really good at this. And again, thank you so much for, for having the confidence to vote for us. I'm going to introduce my boss, Josh Connell.
Village President, Board of Trustees, thank you. My name is Josh Connell, managing partner for Lake Shore Recycling Systems. And again, we appreciate the opportunity. We've done so many of these transitions over the last five years, about 20-some communities. Some of them are tough. You know, we've got Highland Park and Glencoe, St. Charles, and I'm sure LaGrange Park is no different. And so we understand that high degree of service that's going to be required of us, and we're up for the challenge. We also have a state-of-the-art recycling facility that's seven miles away from here. So if anybody wants a tour of that facility, we've got new robotics in there. We've got two more robotics going in, in the spring with automation and artificial intelligence. So anyone who wants to see some of your recycling at work, being sorted, more than happy to provide a tour.
We'll take you up on that. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. That would be great.
Thank you.
Last thing, I'm sorry, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I want to point out how excellent it was to work with Julia and Emily and Rick. They are first-rate stewards of this community. This didn't come easy. They were pit bulls, and I say that to their credit when it came to doing the best thing for this community. So it was a pleasure to work with you three, and again, thank you.
Great. We're looking forward to a great relationship.
Pit bulls in a good way, right?
Right.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Engineering Capital Projects. Trustee Messick, please.
All right. The Engineering Capital Projects report for, first, we'll start with November, since we had an end year. K-5 Construction has completed all paving work on the village's 2018 paving program and is in the process of addressing the remaining punch list items. The final documentation process for the Harding Avenue resurfacing project continues. These improvements were contracted through the Illinois Department of Transportation, and project closeout must follow their procedures. These activities will continue through this winter. All construction work on the Sherwood Road resurfacing project was completed during October. This project is also contracted through the Illinois Department of Transportation and will require a considerable amount of time to generate the required documentation and inspection reports. A preliminary evaluation of the existing pavement conditions was performed with Public Works. This information will be used to develop tentative lists of streets to be included in the village's 2019 paving program. In December, recommendations will be brought to the village board for their input. And then we will do the summary for December of 2018. All but the last few isolated landscaping issues on the village's 2018 paving program have been satisfied factorily addressed by the contractor, which is K-5. Unfortunately, due to the lateness of the season, these remaining punch list items cannot be corrected until early spring. The final documentation process for the Harding Avenue and Sherwood Road resurfacing projects continues. Because these improvements were contracted through the IDOT, project closeout must strictly adhere to their procedures. These activities will continue throughout the winter. The village selected streets to be incorporated into the 2019 paving program. Plans and specifications for the project will be developed over the next 60 days with the intent of bidding the project in late winter. Periodic updates will be provided to the village board for input as the process moves forward. The village board opted to extend very favorable pricing from previous contract with the national power rotting for the cleaning and televising of sewers ahead of the 2019 street paving program. The video generated from this is used to identify any sewer repairs or maintenance needed on these lines prior to constructing roadway improvements. It is anticipated that any work identified will be bid out in late winter and contract documents for performing these repairs brought to the village board for their consideration. And that concludes the report, Mr. President. No action items.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Moving on, Public Safety Committee, Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now we're on to public safety. We will start with the Police Department report. And this is for the, for the year of 2018 closeout. Overall, police activity was at 9,493 incidents reported throughout the year of 2018 from January through December. Please note, 4,000 of these were traffic stop-related.
Please note 4,000 of these were traffic stop-related. Traffic enforcement was at 500, or 5,887 various citations written throughout the year of 2018. The total number of cases involving juvenile offenders for 2018 were at 59 incidents. The department will continue to utilize the attached programs throughout the year which assist in proper education or guidance for all juveniles and their families. Adopt a cop, junior police academy, local ordinance violations for minor offenses, Cook County Sheriff Department first-time offender drug and alcohol youth program, or abuse program, youth outreach services and presence, healthcare, social services, and the Cook Child's Advocacy Center. The police social worker, who is shared professional crisis services provider with the local towns of Bellwood and Stone Park, was involved with over 150 follow-up LaGrange Park cases throughout the year of 2018. A few examples involved attempted suicide, domestic incidents, elder care, juvenile runaways, et cetera. Many special events and community-based programs will continue into 2019. The National Night Out, Walk and Talk, Shop with a Cop, Citizen Police Academy, Coffee with Chief and Staff, Bike Registration, Door Hanger Alert, Closed Home Checks, and Connect Mandering Programs, et cetera. And on Wednesday, January 30th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, an important and timely discussion on suicide awareness, which is free and open to the public, will take place in the Village Hall Boardroom. The presentation will be given by Tandra Rutledge, MA from River Edge Hospital. Seating is limited, so please respond to the commander, Tim Contoy, at 708-352-7711, extension 211, or email TContoy, that's T-C-O-N-T-O-I-S, at lagrangepark.org. And that concludes the Police Department report. On to Fire. And I'm just going to touch lightly on the November so as not to draw it out some, but one thing from November was after various marketing attempts, our 1990 ladder truck was sold in November and the purchaser was from Racine, Wisconsin, picked it up. So he picked up a little bit of money. And then on to the monthly report for December, Fire Department. EMS incidents this month were 115. There were 1,632 incidents for the year compared to 1,701 in 2017. Fire rescue incidents this month were 23 and there were 499 incidents for the year compared to 503 in the prior year. Following a six-month leave of absence, we, Chief met with Division Chief John Carpenter, who has decided to retire from the Fire Department after serving nearly 33 years. We obviously wish him well and hope to honor the service he has provided to the village at some point in the near future and that, that would be well-deserved. On December 8th, the Fire Department once again delivered Santa to the Holiday in the Park event at the Park District and provided a holiday fire safety presentation. On December 18th, five of the new candidates graduated from College of DuPage Fire, Fire Academy. Five other candidates completed EMT training at Triton College and will challenge their licensure exam this month. On December 22nd, the Fire Department assisted with funeral procession for fallen Chicago PD Officer Edward Marmalajo. Our ladder truck along with the Pleasant View truck were set up at 79th Street and Oak Grove Avenue in Justice with an American flag set up over the route of the procession. And on December 30th, an entire company stood by in the Western Springs Fire Station Number One to, to assist in protecting their village while their personnel attended a retirement dinner for Deputy Chief Mayor. And just one final note, which, which came to my attention, we have a paid-on-call firefighter who is not here now, but Matt Dow and he was hired as a full-time in Mount Prospect. The young man went through the Fire Academy in Western Springs and was valedictorian there. When he was required to go again through Mount Prospect at a NIP stuff, Fire Academy, he was again valedictorian. You can't believe the, the value we get from these paid-on-call firefighters and the dedication. And I just said, we're very fortunate for all the public safety we have in this village. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. No action items.
Thank you, trustee Messick. Public Works Committee, trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Monthly report for December was as follows. A special brush pickup was completed after a very heavy snow event in late November causing many branches to break from trees. The Village Leaf Program was completed in December. Crews spent 165 daytime hours picking up nearly 520 cubic yards of leaves. Public Works enjoyed a mild December with only one salting event. Those were the days. Nine overtime hours were spent for our crew to complete the snow operation. Ninety-three and a half regular hours were spent on the maintenance of Public Works equipment vehicles. Salt trucks have started system calibrations in order to function accurately and efficiently. Thirty-one hours have been spent completing street repairs with water excavations with approximately 15 tons of asphalt. Street sweeping continued, spending 61 daytime hours. 198 miles of village roadways were swept, collecting approximately 100 yards of debris and leaves. 152 day shift hours were spent on buildings and ground maintenance around Public Works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. American flags were taken down for the winter along 31st Street. Tree maintenance, trimming, and inspections were performed during 27 regular hours. One tree was planted. On December 12th, Rick Reddy returned to LaGrange Park as our new Public Works Director and he's already paying dividends after this last snowfall we had. I told him before tonight's meeting that I had received five kudos on how well the roads look. So Rick and to staff, thank you. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to residents' concerns. Water Department operations, over 202 day shift hours and six overtime hours during the month of December were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 32,670,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,338 water meters were read in Section 3. 55 monthly accounts and 16 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Three water and sewer inspections, 38 meter appointments, and 22 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. Fifty-two utility locations were identified prior to excavation. One water line service was repaired. Five valve boxes were repaired. Two water shut-offs were performed. Next, Mr. President, I have two action items. 2018-2019 salt purchase contract under an open purchase order. The purpose for Public Works Department is seeking approval tonight from the board to have an open purchase order with Morton Salt for the purchase of salt in the amount not to exceed $42,326.40. General background, the State of Illinois Bureau of Strategic Sourcing secured the requisition quantity of salt with this previous season's contract vendor, Morton Salt. The Block Rock Salt Contract 2018-2019 has been renewed with Morton Salt at $44.09 a ton. The village is required to take a minimum purchase of 640 tons, 80% of the salt at the contract price of $44.09 a ton, which would be a total cost of $28,217.60. The village can purchase a maximum of 120% or 960 tons, which would be at a total cost of $42,326.40. In this fiscal year, the village has budgeted in the Motor Fuel Tax Fund Services 0445532 $75,000. Staff recommends the board approve an open purchase order not to exceed $42,326.40 with Morton Salt for the purchase of salt at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, I make a motion approving an open purchase order with Morton Salt not to, not to exceed a total amount of $42,326.40.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Trustee Sheehan?
That is a very good price to be locked in at. I understand we had some salt moved over just in time for the recent weather change before this, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Sheehan. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Lastly, Mr. President, we have a purchase of a 2019 GMC 2500 HD pickup with snowplow, purpose to request the authorization to purchase the above-mentioned pickup truck with snowplow from Kaufman Truck Sales, Inc., using the municipal fleet purchasing and authorized Sauber Manufacturing to install safety lighting and custom running boards. Back in 2017, Public Works Truck 630 was declared surplus and sold. The proposed pickup truck is the replacement of that vehicle. Public Works worked with Kaufman GMC to build this truck with a snowplow to complement our snow fleet and to be utilized by staff for everyday Public Works functions. Kaufman GMC has worked with the village for the past several vehicles purchased and provides municipal fleet pricing with the total cost of this vehicle from Kaufman will be $38,360.57. Sauber Manufacturing of Virgil, Illinois will complete the fabrication of slip-resistant running boards and installation of safety lighting. Sauber has performed design and build-out services for the current water van and main brake trailer. They do high-quality work and stand behind their product and workmanship. The cost to fabricate and install the necessary equipment is $7,515. Total cost for the truck will be $45,875.57. In the fiscal year 1819 budget, $50,000 was allocated for the purchase of this vehicle under Capitals 0744444, and water 03444400, and sewer 05444400. Mr. President, staff recommendation is the purchase of the 2019 GMC 2500 with the snowplow from Kaufman Truck Sales, Inc., using municipal fleet purchasing program for $38,360.57, and recommends utilizing the services of Sauber Manufacturing to add safety lighting and running board. Therefore, I make a motion, uh, motion to, two-part motion, uh, motion to authorize staff to purchase a 2019 GMC 2500 pickup truck with snowplow from Kaufman Truck Sales, Inc., for $38,360.57.
Second.
Yep.
Motion and a second discussion. Trustee Sheehan?
Truck is up for replacement and we are definitely starting to have a newer-looking fleet in the village, which is good. I'm sure the workers appreciate it and it looks good for the community, so I'm in favor of this.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And then secondly, Mr. President, make a motion authorizing staff to utilize the services of Sauber Manufacturing Company to install slip-resistant running boards and safety lighting for the cost of $7,515.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Trustee Sheehan?
Safety first, all, no, no question about that.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none?
Question.
Trustee Lottner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a clarification, what are the running boards, I mean, what safety improvement is that for?
Well, if you were to go buy stock, you know, GM type of a running board or stepboards that get into the truck, they're very slippery.
Much higher.
So these actually have like the grip-resistant steel and they're going to be dipped in galvanized material, which will keep them from rusting and stuff like that. So they're going to be a little bit higher quality. That's going to take the abuse of our, uh, type of operation that we have.
Understand.
Yeah, working in the elements and collecting stuff on your boots, you don't, you don't want them to slip and fall, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President, that concludes Public Works for this evening, sir.
Thank you, trustee Sheehan. Finance Committee, trustee Raco?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a financial update as of December 31st, 2018. At that point, we were 67% to the fiscal year. And to date, general fund revenue is at 63% of the annual budget and about $497,000 higher than the prior year. Property tax revenue is $89,000 or 5% greater than last year due in part to refunds in the prior year. Sales tax receipts are about 13% higher than last year, while telecommunications taxes are down about 9%. Permit revenue is up about $34,000 or 13% compared to last year. Intergovernmental revenue is up about 10% compared to last year, with income tax receipts 9% higher than last year and state use tax 13% higher than last year. Fine revenue is up 6% compared to last year due in part to a large court fine payment and local debt recovery program receipts. Miscellaneous revenue is significantly higher than last year due primarily to the increase in lower, and, excuse me, in the tower lease fees, interest income, and net worth, net west radio system member reimbursements. The total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 62% of the annual budget and about $159,000 greater than last year. And that concludes my report. There are no action items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Raco. Other reports? Village Clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our Village Treasurer?
No report, Mr. President.
Village Engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our Village Attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Motion to approve committee and collectors' reports as presented?
Promote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. Number one, the West Central Municipal Conference Legislative Breakfast is February 9th. If you would like to attend and have not registered yet, please let Sandy know. Before I forget, I want to thank Eric and David and LT TV for your continual quality transmission of our, of our board meetings. Thank you for all your work. Okay. Emily, again, thank you for all you did to get this to us and to provide all the information and, and discussion and, great job. Lot of work, lot of work. And Rick, good to have you back, Rick.
Good to be back. Thank you.
Okay, one other, one last thing, and that's, I passed on Commercial Realization Committee because trustee, because Sarah's not here, but I do have it in front of me. So in December, staff uploaded the annual tax increment financing reports to the Illinois Comptroller's Office. And SB Friedman Development Advisors continues to work on the market analysis and residual land analysis for the former Pancake House property. They anticipate the results of that analysis will be presented to the village board in late February or early March. George, you have been one patient man. Would you care to speak to the board?
Actually, I'm prepared.
Oh. I'm sorry, I thought you were waiting to speak.
I, I would like the opportunity to speak, but I came to see how the process is working and, uh...
Okay, would you, would you care to present some of them?
Well, I'd be happy.
I mean, you waited all this time. I appreciate maybe some comments.
Yeah, I don't know if this is working or not, but basically I am a resident at 1100 West 31st Street, on 31st Street, one of two parcels of property there in the northwest part of the village. We obtain water from the village of West Chester. We would like, the neighboring property is up for sale and have been on the market for over a year. We're looking at purchasing that potential type of property, hoping to do something to preserve it, not positively develop it or whatever. It is in need of water service from West Chester also. It needs to be connected to the municipal sewer. It's part of the project that's going to be done. Significant costs associated with it. We are looking to see if the village would be interested in somehow providing some water service to us and being able to assist in that down the road. I don't know how much more I can add.
Okay, and, and you have been in discussion with Rick and Julia and everybody, I mean, Emily at the West Chester meeting, so we've got the ball rolling a little bit.
Yes.
Okay. And again...
I want to know what's next, what, what we can do, how, how I can formalize it, what I need to do.
Okay, I would recommend maybe getting in touch with Emily and discussing that with her and we can see where we can go with that. Okay? Thank you, George, and thank you for being so patient.
Thank you.
Okay, any new business? Motion to adjourn?
Promote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1776.86]